Good evening. We'd like to welcome you all out to the Planning Commission meeting here for, it's Wednesday, August 2nd. Can you believe it? We'll go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll please raise.
Right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We have started to have a little bit of a session here at the beginning of our meeting for anybody that may not be, maybe here for no other reason than just to be here. If you have a, if there's an agenda item, please, we do ask that you wait until the agenda item to make any comment, but if there's somebody who'd like to make a comment for something that's not on the agenda, that you think us as a Planning Commission ought to be considering, we would give you a few minutes now to come forward and state your name and share anything that you'd like to share. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on then. We have three meeting minutes to approve, May 3rd, June 7th, and July 12th. Does the Planning Commission have any comments about the meeting minutes in order to approve them?
I didn't have any questions. I'd make a motion that we approve the three meeting minutes.
Okay, I've got a motion from Commissioner Tanner.
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Tag. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Anderson, we'll turn the time to you for the Planning Commission training.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. We're very, very fortunate tonight to have a distinguished expert with us. We've contracted for some time now with Coldwell Banker Commercial as our advisors to give us counsel and recommendations when it comes to land use in Spanish Fork, particularly commercial land use. It's great to have Mr. Bowler, Steve Bowler, and his group available for us to run different ideas and concepts by when it comes to trying to identify sites in Spanish Fork that in the short term or the long term might be able to support retail development. And that's really the main thing that we focused with as we've corresponded with his group. You're all very, very well aware that, just for example, residential development, you know, all of the new subdivisions that we see being constructed all over town, those from a financial perspective really are a net loss for the city. And the way that we ultimately are able to provide services to those new homes, just like we've done, the dwellings that are in town and have been here for a while, is to basically subsidize those services with sales tax. And you all have noticed that we've seen a lot of new commercial development happen in Spanish Fork in recent years. We've been very fortunate that our sales tax revenue has grown. And we're very, very concerned to make sure that, not only from a quality of life perspective, which we absolutely believe new commercial development can mean for residents here in the community, but also from that revenue perspective, that we're not missing opportunities to support retail development in the future. So I think we've been very lucky in recent months to have had some very talented people come and talk about things like transportation and residential development. And we'll kind of continue with a different theme every month that I can talk somebody into coming and spending some time with us. And again, tonight, we're fortunate to have Steve Bowler here. I've asked him to take a few minutes to kind of maybe just give a broad overview on some of the things that factor into making a site work for retail development, maybe some of the things that today retailers are really focused on. And then also maybe just to talk a little bit about trends and some of the things that he sees in his business. One of the things that I think has really made Steve a great fit for us is, he doesn't just give cities advice on what to do with zoning and plans for commercial development, but he represents many of the retailers that we're really excited to see doing business in Spanish Fork. So it's a very authoritative perspective that he brings to the topic, and that certainly is enough for me. So Steve, where's yours?
Well, I am grateful to be with you tonight, hopefully share a little bit of my knowledge I've collected over the years. I do work with Coldwell Banker Commercial. I do strictly retail properties. It's kind of divided up into industrial properties, office, and retail right now is what we focus on. So I've had the advantage to work with Dave for the last few years and looking at some of the issues that are coming in Spanish Fork City, and I have to say, I think they're all quite exciting. I see great things happening. And I see a great push to plan and move the city in the right direction, not just for right now, but for many years to come. To give you a little more breakdown on what I do, my business is kind of goes in three areas. One is a consultant. Secondly, I do work with developers or property owners who want to develop their property into retail-type properties. And that can range from a gas station on the corner to 40, 50-acre retail developments that we look at. And so a lot goes into it in knowing what the retailer wants, what the customer wants to experience as they go to that shopping center, and how to make something successful so that it does provide a tax revenue for the city, but also an opportunity for cities to come together in a retail environment. So the other side of it is I represent tenants, as Dave mentioned. I've done a lot of work with Smiths, with Harman's, J.C. Penney, Petco, Olive Garden, Longhorn, which is another concept that's owned by the same company as Olive Garden. We do a lot of smaller work, things like Freddy's Steak Burgers and Custard. We do Jersey Mike sandwiches. So it's a huge variety of tenants that we really work with. We've had some fun projects come together. The most recent one that just got finished is in Woods Cross. It's a new Smiths anchored center right off the freeway, if you've been up there. And actually, the most recent one is today, we just opened a Smiths in St. George, the last Smiths to open down there, a new super center down there. So that's kind of the background of where I come from. You know, the retail industry, you hear a lot on the news right now about retail and the internet overtaking retail and brick-and-mortar stores. And there is a shift right now taking place in the retail industry. But if you look at retail historically, there's always been a factor that's kind of affected. You know, in the 70s, it was catalog-type sales. In the 80s, a lot of things happened on TV, QVC and a lot of those things. A lot of people thought that was going to be the end of brick-and-mortar stores and the end of retail. As we moved into the 90s, the internet started to have some impact. A lot of that was done mostly with home computers. As we moved into the 2000s, we had a little more impact as it moved more to an iPad-type thing, and now it's moved to the mobile phone. And you see a lot of discussion with retailers trying to figure out how to link the online sales with the brick-and-mortar stores. And retailers, some are figuring it out pretty well, others are struggling. And it's a very fascinating time in this industry to see what is taking place and what will take place. A lot of retailers are moving to add more services into their stores because it's tough to get your pet groomed over the internet. You can probably buy dog food, but it's tougher than that. So a lot of them are moving to more service-based things that bring the customer in so that they can sell the service and the retail product at the same time. Food is huge right now. Everywhere you go, there's some type of new food-type concept that's come up. That ranges from the sit-down restaurant like Olive Garden, down in through the quick-serve categories, which are more like Costa Vida, to the fast food. And so that's been the thing that's been kind of bulletproof right now as the retail world tries to figure out online sales, is food seems to be king. Grocery stores have still done very well. We see a lot of expansion with those, with new Smiths, new Harman's, Winco coming in very strong, Walmart. But there's also a little bit of a shift coming there now too, because they are starting to figure out, Smiths has, and I think Walmart has too, the way you can order online and you pull up and they'll bring your groceries out and load them in your car for you. And Walmart's actually got a concept where there's a kiosk on Van Winkle in Salt Lake where you can order things online. They don't have a store there. They took a little bank building and they've converted it to where they will take your groceries to that location and then you can come pick them up there. But the next one that will happen pretty quick, we think, is actually the full delivery of groceries to your home. There's been a lot of talk about that for years, and there'll be some impact as to how grocery stores plan and execute home delivery. So, you know, it will continue to be interesting. Brick-and-mortar stores still have over 90% of sales of merchandise in the country, and there's a lot of conveniences with Amazon. And so retailers are still pushing to figure out how to merge those two things together, the online sale and the brick-and-mortar store. There are studies out right now that show a retailer that if they have a brick-and-mortar presence in a certain area, that their sales, for online sales, are much higher. So there's definitely not this need to abandon all and move to everything being shipped out of a warehouse from that. I did bring a few statistics for you that are in the packet that I handed out earlier that I'll let you look through. What takes place is on the left-hand side are some statistics for Utah County. The first one is a retail overview. The second one is office and industrial for you to look through. And on the right-hand side are Salt Lake County statistics. You'll notice that we'll talk about average lease rates right now. It'll talk about absorption of existing retail space. It talks about vacancy rates, which are very low right now for existing retail space at 3.5%, and they've remained steady there. And the other one across the top is retail under construction. And this has been a pretty interesting shift in the last year. It used to be that Salt Lake County by far led the amount of construction that took place in retail. And right now, you'll see that there's 1.2 million square feet of retail space under construction in Utah County, and in Salt Lake County, 794,000. And we see that as a shift that will probably take place and continue for many, many years. Recent reports have shown that the majority of growth residentially will take place in Utah County, and usually the retail follows the residential. So we think that your jobs on the Planning Commission is a very important thing. Obviously, right now, the majority of that construction is taking place in the northern part of the county with the silicon slopes going in up there, but it's definitely happening here too, and we're seeing that. We're seeing retailers right now that wouldn't look at Spanish Fork five years ago, that are now obviously showing a ton of interest in going into the new development out with Walmart. And we don't see that slowing down. So interesting shifts taking place. Salt Lake County, a lot of the residential development has taken place. There's still some room to go, but by far, the majority of that growth will take place in Utah County and some north in Weaver and Davis Counties from now on.
Steve?
Yeah?
That Salt Lake industrial is like 4 million square feet, the Utah County's 1 million. So it's kind of the other way around there on that statistic.
Yeah.
What do you see there?
You're seeing such a major hub with the intersection of I-80 and I-15 that takes place out by the airport out there. And there's still industrially a lot of land that can be developed in that area, and that seems to be the bull's eye for what's taking place. The prison at one time, which was deemed to be such a negative to everybody that got tagged with it, now that it's been placed, has actually become a positive in a lot of ways. It spurred a lot of new infrastructure for roads to get out to the prison because it is quite a ways off of I-80. And you've got a lot of groups that have now come in and put in huge new million-plus-square-foot distribution facilities out there. So we do see that probably being the hotbed for industrial continue kind of where it is right now for that. But no, we do see wonderful things taking place, and it's great to see your community go. I'll touch base on a few things that retailers look at, and retail is by far the pickiest group of businesses. You know, office, there is some importance as to where office building goes, but they want services around it. Industrial kind of loops to where it's more transportation-based. Retail, I mean, it's location, 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 and those things are impacted by visibility, by the signage that the retailer can get, by the traffic, both the existing traffic now and the proposed traffic in the future, and then access. Access has become lately one of the toughest things to protect, and there's a balance between safety, which is very important, and not having any access to get to a lot of these businesses. Most of that battle we see from UDOT. Cities seem to be much more accommodating to allowing access and working with that. UDOT has figured out that if they don't let any traffic on the road, then they don't have any cars to worry about. So they're limiting that a ton. So I would encourage you that as you look at projects, you know, it needs to fit in well with the neighborhoods. It needs to have a plan to it. There's definitely a balance. The commercial can work with residential, but it has to be planned out appropriately. And I think that's a tough job that you all have to make sure that happens. And the transportation, you know, we're seeing cities like Lehigh right now become overrun with residential growth and retail. And I think that the most advanced planning you can get, the better off we are. The new Parkway that you're putting in right up here, I think that's a wonderful thing to see happening now so that that's in place as the growth comes to it, instead of tearing out homes and businesses to make those roads fit better. But I would commend you on the things that you've done in Spanish Fork to do a balance and to get the retail. It's not an easy thing to get. Sales tax from it is a wonderful thing for the cities and as well as a sense of community. So to my comments, any questions or any comments for me? Thank you for your time.
We appreciate your information. Our next item on the agenda is a conditional use permit, 350 south generator addition to existing cell site. These are the exciting things that we get to deal with.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. You've seen similar requests several times for this particular site over the years. As this is a conditional use, you do need to hold a public hearing. And on this one, unlike a lot of the things that come before you, the Planning Commission is the land use authority. So you'll be making, unlike what we've said here, a recommendation. You'll be making a decision. I guess we'll call that staff's recommendation, but you'll be making a decision on the proposal. I think a lot of you guys know where this site is, right behind the batter's eye on what I still call Don's Field. I think it may have been renamed here a year or two ago. Existing cell tower site. We're looking to add an additional generator to the compound that they have there, so this generator will be outside. But I'm just gonna hustle through some of the schematics here. Way more information than I think we probably need to spend any time talking about. Again, it's a generator that's not quite as big as a small car, but it's a pretty good size. It would be located on-site, backup source of power for the telecommunications facility there. It's allowed in the public facility zone, subject to having conditional use approval from the Planning Commission. And staff recommends, because we don't see any, you know, adverse, even potential adverse impact coming from having this additional equipment there on that compound, we recommend that the proposed conditional use be approved.
What are the standard conditions that are built into the...
With...
Because basically, if they meet those conditions as outlined in the ordinance, we're under obligation to approve that. Is that correct?
Almost.
Almost.
So there are two things that sound a lot alike, but they're really quite different. There are uses that are subject to conditions, which I think is what you just described, where we prescribe or predetermine a certain set of conditions, and those are put in an ordinance. And if somebody meets those, it automatically gets approved. And in those cases, those don't come to you. We don't have public hearings and that sort of a thing. Sounds a lot like a conditional use, but that is different in that we don't predetermine all of the conditions at least that somebody has to meet in order to get something approved. And that's with the idea that oftentimes, sites are distinct enough from one another that it's hard to predetermine or guess what maybe all should be covered. It leaves some latitude so that as the public provides thoughts and insight on a particular neighborhood or, you know, again, a particular site, those are things then that you can take into account as you generate specific conditions that are intended to mitigate any adverse impacts that might come about from having that use at a particular location. And with cell towers, some of the things that have been done in the past, we required them, for example, maybe to be a different color than galvanized steel or something like that, the idea that maybe we can help it blend in with a landscape a little bit But frankly, we've been pretty light with other conditions that have been generated. There are some cities that go to great lengths to require, in fact, our ordinance uses the word stealth, to try to camouflage or disguise or otherwise hide cell tower and the related facilities. We haven't done a lot of that over the years, but that certainly is within your purview if you'd like to do that. Now, in this case, we're not talking about any modifications to anything that has much height to it. It's just that generator on-site. So as we look at it as staff, we couldn't come up with any conditions other than just the generic, meet the city standards, which goes without saying anyway.
Does the footprint of the enclosure change as a result?
It doesn't with this. So within that existing fenced area, the generator would be located.
Is it enclosed as well? Is that what I'm...
Yes.
...noticed. It looked like it had a building that, excuse me, that enclosed it. Okay. Any questions for staff?
Is there any concern of noise maybe with neighbors? Is it like scheduled to run a, you know, a test mode every so often that could be a concern?
Every 30 days, it kicks on for some period of time. I can't remember exactly what that is. Generally, that's a maintenance saying that that happens. We have a number of these things throughout town. Basically, every place that there is a cell tower, there's this backup power source that's provided. And maybe it's because we haven't ever had complaints about noise from those that we haven't really been very inquisitive on that. But we haven't had complaints over the years about those.
Go back to the aerial.
So bottom, if you can... Yeah, there we go. Do you want to... Tell you what, do you want to zoom out just with the mouse? More? A little bit more? And then go over just to the side over and go to the... Yeah, go there.
Is there currently a generator there already?
There is, yes. There are several different companies that have equipment there in that compound, which incidentally is another thing that we've really tried to promote over the years, the idea of co-locating equipment and things like that, even on the same pole, so that we have fewer poles around town.
Any other questions for staff? I entertain a motion to enter a public hearing then?
I approve.
Motion from Commissioner Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the commission on this conditional use permit item? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to move out of public hearing.
Make a motion that we move out of public hearing?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any other comments or questions, or I'd entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use, or make a recommendation to approve the conditional...
We approve it.
Oh, do we?
It doesn't go to the city council. It doesn't go to the city council, correct.
Make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit.
A motion from Commissioner Tanner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is a zone change in preliminary plat for Weaver's Vineyard, and this will also be a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Tim, thanks for putting public hearing on the agenda. Really, it's helpful.
Public hearing here because of the proposed zone change part of it. I think a lot of you are familiar with the site and the proposed project. Two different components to the proposed zone change. First of all, on the northern part of the project, currently, we have commercial 2 zoning in place. The applicants requested that be changed to R112. And then down on the southern part of the project, right now, that is zone rural residential, and likewise, the applicants requested R112 zoning so that the entire property could be developed as one subdivision in the R112 zone. So again, that's one part of the proposal. Preliminary plat's the other, and those are the two components of the proposed zone change. Got another image that I'll refer to in a minute, just relative to the history of the zoning, but just to touch on how that came to be on the majority of it, the property was rezoned, the majority of it at least, from industrial back in 2009 with a proposal that we received from some folks that were representing the property then. And that's where the R112 and the commercial 2 zoning came about, and it's been zoned that way since, again, 2009. So the subdivision plat then, total of 207 lots on 80 acres, so well within the density that's allowed for master plan developments in the R112 zone. This is a pretty good image here to use to kind of give an overview of the project. Del Monte Road right here is a point of reference, Arrowhead Trail, so this is the lighted intersection that I think would be the primary point of access for the development for a really long time into the future. Eventually, we would anticipate another connection here into what would be Woodland Hills Drive, but that wouldn't happen until adjacent properties develop. And my guess is that that likely will take some time to come about. Now, that being said, there is a second access, if you will, to the project, which is Calpak Drive, which kind of intersects with Del Monte, just sort of off of this map, a little bit to the south and east of this point here. So in that regard, you know, really from the day that this, you know, I'll take that back, really from day one, when this street ties into Del Monte here, the project would have, I think as we look at it, two accesses. So that's something that is a big deal for several of our folks and something that we want to make sure is in place. I guess also to talk to this, again, over 200 homes, our city's parks and recreation master plan does call for a park in the vicinity of this project. So this mass that you see right here, that is intended to be dedicated to the city as a city park. I think it's about 3.5 acres in size, which is what we're looking for for a community-type park.
How's that compare with like Sierra Park that was just finished?
Sierra Bonita... Sierra Bonita.
Just more of Sierra Bonita Elementary, yeah.
Five acres, I want to say that is. So that's a little bit bigger.
I'll check if it's doing.
Just point of reference for me.
Yeah. Abbey Court, I think, is a little bit smaller than this. Get you that park there. And anyway, just kind of an overview there of the project.
So Corey, from a transportation perspective, does Del Monte Road have the capacity to handle this kind of impact?
It does. It'll, of course, take some widening and rebuilding portions of it with the truck traffic that drives on it today. But yes, between the, especially having a lighted intersection there at Arrowhead Trail, as well as a secondary out on Calpak, it's consistent with our master plan.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I clicked off a bit.
Is that what I was?
I'm missing, so...
Got it. Just a little bit closer view of the southern part of the project. I mean, come back to any of these that you guys might want to see in more detail. Again, zoned R112, so the average lot size in this case, because of the park and a big lot, is a little bit smaller than 12,000 square feet. But again, well within that density range that's allowed in the R112 zone. Currently, just to talk maybe about the zoning, right now, the general plan does have, I mean, it coincides with the zoning. So where the subject property currently is zone commercial two, we've also earmarked that on the general plan for commercial. No surprise there, I'm sure. We talked a little bit about this in a work session last month, and I've shared my thoughts with you guys. I'll just briefly share them again, which is that frankly, I think there are better sites along Arrowhead Trail and 1900 South heading out to the Salem Benjamin Interchange to earmark for commercial development than this one. Just for example, this one right here, Mill Road and Arrowhead Trail. This site today has the advantage of an existing signal that's there, which immediately suggests, hey, there might be some potential for non-residential development there because you've got that, that investment that's happened in that facility. And that's a good sign for commercial development. The negative that we have here at this intersection compared with this one here just really is the anticipated traffic volumes of Woodland Hills Drive over the years and even Mill Road and the area that it will serve to the north, which is quite a bit larger than what Del Monte Road will serve. So over time, I think it's very reasonable to expect this to become a much more significant intersection than Del Monte Road and Arrowhead Trail. So that's my two cents worth, which is that, you know, as jealous as I am about making sure that we don't miss on an opportunity for commercial development, this probably is one that I'm not really concerned about at this point in time. However, and to kind of recap some of the things we just talked about earlier tonight, but I'm much more concerned about some other sites between, let's just say, Main Street and I-15. So I do hope that sometime fairly soon, perhaps even in the next month, we can have a get-together, maybe perhaps even with some of our colleagues from Salem to the south to talk about just exactly what might make the most sense to plan for from a non-residential perspective going out to that interchange. I think by and large, over the years with the general plan that's been in place, we've done a reasonably good job of trying to predict what some of those opportunities might be. But we've never really focused on that corridor in a very area-specific kind of a way. And I think absolutely now is the time to do that, where we're still out ahead of development. And it'd be in the spirit of making sure that we don't miss an opportunity. So on the zoning, staff's recommendation is to approve the proposed zone change with simply the caveat that in the very near future, we'd look at other sites. The idea that we would want, at least on the general plan, to earmark those for commercial development and to go about it that way. Another issue in terms of procedure to deal with, and we'll talk about this with a few applications that are on the agenda tonight. We have a growth boundary in Spanish Fork that exists for the purpose of identifying parts of the city where collectively, decision-makers, that's you and the city council, have earmarked areas where you believe we can provide services for development. So right now, the majority of the project that's before you is located within that growth boundary. So this line here, everything, maybe just say to the upper right or to the northeast, that is within the city's growth boundary. There's a small part of the project that isn't. And from that perspective, particularly given that there's going to be a very significant investment made into infrastructure to allow this property to develop, which also will serve surrounding properties as well. I think now is the time, kind of like with the commercial zoning, to take a look at the growth boundary and to consider expanding it so that it does coincide with the areas that we can serve with infrastructure, which really is the point of having that growth boundary in place.
The growth boundary, does it coincide with the city boundary then?
It does not.
I can understand outside the city boundary, but is it within the city? Help me understand how those two, what the relationship is between those two.
Most of the properties that are within the city are also within the growth boundaries, but not all of them.
This is one of those situations where...
I mentioned kind of the history of the zoning of the property. This is an image that we were given back in 2009. It just kind of shows what the development proposal at that point in time was. A little bit different. I mean, for example, at the time, at that time, we thought we could construct an access down under the state highway coming off of the hillside. That's something, for a variety of reasons, mostly just engineering and topography, we've abandoned. It's a little bit interesting from my perspective, though. This is the area that is zone commercial. Some relatively high-density housing was planned for this part of the project here. We did not approve a plat for the development back in 2009, but this really is the concept that was discussed in the planning commission city council meetings back then. Again, just a little bit of history on how we ended up with the R112 and the commercial zoning both. Not a lot of need to talk much about this, but again, just kind of overall density of the project here in seven units, proposed zoning. I've talked about the general plan and the commercial designation, the need to expand the growth boundary to catch a small part of this project on the side.
We need to amend the general plan from the commercial two to a residential?
I think it's very appropriate to do that in the near future.
Maybe as a part of our conversation on the commercial further down 1900 South that we can consider that.
I think that's the most appropriate way to do it, certainly. You're not obligated. The city council ultimately isn't as they make decisions. General plan in Utah is an advisory document versus something that's compulsory for us to... But anyway, we've been working with the applicant on this project for a number of months. And I think really, I've worked through vast majority of the issues. Corey Pierce, he's prepared to address any questions you might have about utilities and that sort of a thing. I kind of gave you half of a story a little bit earlier tonight about utilities and getting those extended out towards the Salem Benjamin Interchange. And we'll talk more about that with an annexation that's on your agenda. But in short, you can kind of picture coming, maybe if you're driving towards town, from that interchange, as you get closer to the old Fritzy property and this property, you go up a hill, right? Well, we're working on a sewer lift station that would be constructed in the vicinity of the new Revere Health Building that essentially will pump the effluent up that hill to get it to the top. And that's where it will tie into infrastructure that would be constructed to accommodate this development, where then gravity will take over. And lines would be constructed to carry that over across the state highway or Main Street under Spanish Fork River, where it would tie into an existing sewer line that we have that's in South Lane.
Correct.
And from there, again, gravity would carry it to the wastewater treatment plant. So that section from this project to South Lane is something that the applicant for this development's working on right now. They may have some plans to start on. Some of that work very soon, in fact. And that's one piece that if they start on that and proceed to build that, then the lift station that we talked about in those plans would be the other piece to get service extended out again towards the interchange. Certainly game changers in terms of infrastructure that would open up areas of the community for additional development. I guess probably not everybody will like that. But certainly having properties developed out towards that interchange, particularly with the non-residential potential that they'll, I suspect, have for decades to come, could be a very good thing for the city. And that's why it's something of a priority for us to see that happen in terms of the annexations and this infrastructure being constructed. And what would be done for this development is a fairly important part of that. I'm sure there are some other ways that service can be provided as well. But right now, it seems like a very functional plan with a good opportunity to make that happen with this project. So staff's recommended that the preliminary plat be approved, you know, really without much in the way of conditions even.
Is that lift station going to happen whether or not this zone change takes place? As far as with Sun Rock's support of that or help with that?
Corey, you might be able to talk better to this than me. But as I understand it, kind of the sequence of events is once these folks start on their infrastructure, then we proceed with plans to design the lift station and the lines that would be associated with that. And it kind of happens at least in that sequence. So I'm not sure that we would proceed forward necessarily if this project didn't go forward.
You know, it's kind of a partnership. There's some developers out in that area towards interchange that would like to develop, that would participate in a lift station. The city would participate. As Dave mentioned, budgeting and things that have, we have not budgeted or planned on this gravity sewer line. That's part of what this development would build. So, yeah, I don't think we'd move forward unless another developer were to step forward and say, we want to, you know, participate and be able to help build this infrastructure as well. So it's kind of a three-party, potentially more, you know, getting involved to try to accomplish it.
Literally, from my perspective, it's a little bit of the stars aligning to where you've got really the three groups coming together to try to facilitate things and make it happen.
Questions for staff? Okay. I'd entertain a motion to move into public hearing then. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone here that would like to address the commission regarding the Weaver's Vineyard zone change in preliminary plat? Please come forward, state your name. Mr. Washburn, right?
My name is Paul Washburn. I am with Clyde Properties and the developer of the site. I think Mr. Anderson has done a really good job of presenting the project overall. There's just a couple of things I would like to add. In regard to the zone change, the previous owner who initially tried to ask for the zone change and had it approved, believed that with a lot of work, he could convince UDOT to allow him additional accesses onto Arrowhead Road. Arrowhead Road, as you know, is a limited access highway. They were unwilling then. I think it'd be safe to say they're extremely unwilling at this point to allow additional accesses. As part of looking at this, we have tried to work closely with Mr. Tandler. He is the owner of the Fritzy property. We have been in a number of meetings that have involved Caldwell Banker Advisors as well. One of the concerns that has been expressed is in terms of trying to find a retail user that could utilize that entire site, they believe is decades of, if not maybe lots of decades away from that being a reality. In the end term, I believe there is a strong interest on Mr. Tandler's part to develop his property in a retail situation. His retail is, he's much better located for retail than we are. Concerned that if we try and develop retail there, that we may end up with diminishing effect. We end up maybe with some retail, but it diminishes his ability to be successful in what he does. So that's something we've weighed in. The other issue that we looked at is what kind of retail could we attract there? And those were also pretty limited. Closest thing we looked at was probably a convenience store, something of that sort. I don't know that that's probably the best neighbor for the residential units in that area. So we're probably looking harder, trying to find a way to make our neighborhood work, provide some impetus for more retail to happen on the Tandler property. He's probably better located. And then again, back on Mill Road that Mr. Anderson talked about. And the last thing I'd like to mention is the off-site sewer that we're going to be involved in, that will ultimately allow the lift station to function. This is a big project. It's a very sertuitous route out there. We estimate that we're going to have an off-site expense of somewhere between a million three and a million seven to get that done. That's something that will have to be done prior to the first house coming online. It's a big expense. We're willing to undertake it. We've, you know, been a part of the community at Sun Rock for a number of years. We want to be a good neighbor, but it's a big expense. And if we don't undergo that expense, I think the ability for the city to move forward with developing properties further to the south is going to be hamstring for a number of years.
Thank you. Any questions for him? Okay. Anybody else? Please come forward. Not that we don't know you, but state your name if you want.
Hello, Clint Argyle. And just so I can learn a little bit about everything that's been going into this plan, I just have a few questions. Can you explain the high-density zone? Because 1 to 12 seems like a lot more than what I'm seeing on the plat. So it's R112, or, yeah, R112. Is that 1 to 12 units per acre?
No, the 12 designation is the size of the lot.
Ah, okay, so 12,000.
12,000 square foot lots. Is the maximum size or minimum size?
Okay.
12,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the minimum.
Minimum size, okay.
Unless you do a master plan development, then we just...
Take the average.
Focus on units per acre.
Okay. Hop in.
I can yell that when I sometimes talk. I'm not here. 2.7 units per acre is what is allowed as the maximum density in a project that's done in the R112 zone. So that's...
And this is? So right on that 2.0, okay.
So there's not going to be any apartments or townhomes or eight-plexes?
As proposed, it would be 207 single-family, or 207 lots for single-family homes. I think I'm going to vouch for the 207. We apparently have put 216 on another document. I'll double-check that. It's a number I've been using. Appreciate that.
Also, down this, okay, so Calpak Avenue, I think that's it right there. And all of us have water rights, and so there's a ditch that goes right down here, and it's mostly covered. It's uncovered right in here, part of it, covered through here, and then uncovered down through here. I just don't know if that's been discussed. Does that go behind these lots? Is it going to be changed at all when they start doing excavation? We just have some questions about that as neighbors, if that's been thought through. So I don't know who would...
Corey, if you can.
We would protect everything. What we typically do is direct the applicant to work with the irrigation company. I don't know what level of discussions they've had in a preliminary. We kind of look at the general layout of utilities and can we service? We typically get into a final plat when we get very specific into those items. But the short answer is yes. We protect any necessary or continued irrigation. If irrigation companies or owners that use that say, we don't need it, go ahead and abandon it, then it would.
If they tell you that, please let me know.
No, we would protect, and we typically require something in writing saying.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. And then culinary water, we have culinary water coming down this road here. Is it proposed to connect into ours and go into here? Or is culinary water coming from somewhere else?
Both.
Both?
So we require secondary loops after a certain amount of units. So the first phases may pull it in from one spot. So the first phases may pull it in from one spot. Once they reach a certain point where that use gets higher, they need to provide a secondary. So ultimately it would be connected above some, provide that secondary loop.
Okay, great. And then with that, we also bring, bringing in the secondary water as well?
Yes.
And where will that come in at?
Today, that secondary water is located right here, near the intersection with this development. North across the intersection, there's also a line in Main Street on the north side of the river.
Okay, great, so would it affect this street at all with bringing that in to use that for watering our yards and that kind of things? Right now, we have culinary water to do our sprinkling systems and that kind of thing, so.
At, at some point, I'm not sure with this development, we haven't quite got to that level of detail on the exact route, but we would require a connection and then a secondary looped connection at a, at fifty units is what's required.
That might happen then?
That, that may be a route that makes sense, yes.
So that's true of P I N for culinary?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, and then you mentioned sewer, can you show us where approximately the sewer is going to be coming? I kind of understood somewhere here or?
It, it'll come and cross the highway just on the north side of the wetlands pond that was built, follow the river and a casing under the river, up through these properties until we hit to South Lane.
Okay.
So kind of up through along a route here that they've worked with the landowner on.
All right, so it's not going to be, it won't be coming down here, we don't need to worry about connecting into that at this point?
No.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, do you know about how many trips per day these homes are going to make coming out on this road right here?
An average trip for a regular single-family home is around ten.
Ten trips per day?
Per day.
So that's ten times two hundred and seven?
Mm-hmm. Now that's spread out throughout the day, certainly in the morning when people are going to work, you'll have a peak time and in evenings when people are coming home, there's a peak, but the ten trips per day are spread throughout the daytime.
Okay, great. Can you talk a little bit more then about the road improvements that are going to be done here to handle that much extra number of trips per day?
Improvements at this point that have been discussed would be widening and providing curb and gutter on the south or west side, whichever direction you look at that as, along Del Monte.
Okay, so be curb and gutter on the one side of the road, the other side of the road wouldn't be unimproved?
Minimum requirements by code are half of the roadway cross-section plus ten feet, which gives two-lane travel. And then they would approve their frontage.
Okay, great. And then nothing planned right now for Calpak Avenue for improvements with that additional traffic?
At this point, there isn't any, no, there have been discussed.
And then there's some major berms right here. Do you know if those are planned to be taken out with the development excavation? That might be a question for developers.
They've done some grading work and, well, not some, they've done a lot of grading work in planning out their subdivision. With it being a gravel pit, there's going to be a lot of cutting in areas and filling in areas to essentially make the whole bowl, if you will, kind of one elevation or close to the same elevation. So you'll see those berms come down and a lot of areas filled and, yeah.
So they just become part of the lots in the ground balance there, land balance, okay. And then, I've had some longtime residents, they're actually here today that I know, said that over the years they've noticed that there's been some big holes in here that have received some concrete and rebar and all kinds of stuff. And I'm just having a flashback of what I saw behind Mayor Barney's place. Started back there and also it looks like it's a war zone back there, digging stuff up and cleaning up. Do we anticipate any of that here with this project?
My understanding, reading the geotechnical report, there's areas where there has been some debris, construction debris, concrete filled. It's indicated that that would need to be removed and replaced with.
So the developers planning on that as part of the whole process?
I expect so, Paul might be able to address that better.
Do you mind addressing that just because it is a concern of several people?
Mr. Washburn, go ahead if you come forward, just in case somebody's watching or will be watching later.
We have acquired the site, I guess in the last ten years. Part of our, I guess, policy is we do not bury materials on-site at all. And so everything we get is collected and either taken to the point of mountain crushed or we do it on-site, depending on the size of the, of the material we have. We have identified the areas that the previous owner had flagged to us that may have material there. And over the past ten years, during winter months when we're doing other activities, we've tried to remediate as many of those as possible. At this point, with the exception of one small area by the shops, we believe it has all been remediated. However, as we do each one of these individual phases, and need to point out, this project's not going to happen all at once. This will probably be a three to, three to five-year project to get all done. Obviously, the staff is going to require us to come in and do an, a, a more localized soil study where we do core borings and things to make sure things are there. And obviously, we want to clean it up. We're a very liability adverse company. We're going to make sure that we don't leave anything that may come back to haunt us in the future.
Thank you.
And if it provides comfort, our code requires that they remove any of that, you know, construction debris or potential garbage or that, out of any residential areas, so that's something we'll be watching for and requiring.
Wonderful, that sounds great. And then, last question from my wife, she was wondering about noise ordinances? Just as far as with fi- three to five years of construction going on there, is it between seven and nine at night or something or?
Typically, I believe it's seven to seven, seven to ten.
Seven to ten PM? Okay. Thank you, that's all my questions.
Thanks, Mr. Argyle. Is there anybody else that would like to address the commission? Okay, I'm seeing none, I would entertain a motion to move out of public hearing.
I'll make the motion that we move out of public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Great, thank you. Any comments from the planning commission about this proposal?
I'd like to make a comment. Corey, can you go to the general plan that maybe covers that a little bit bigger? I like the concept of all of the residential, is it Paul?
Yes.
Maybe I'll kind of talk, talk to you because that's, I'd like some input maybe to counter what my thoughts are, but the two zoning areas, I'm okay with one of them, the one that's more in the, on the lower end here. But this one here with commercial, I, I'm nervous about letting that go for the city's best interest of tax base and some of the things we even heard from Caldwell Banker a few minutes ago. And as I see, you know, IFA and the rental place there and Fritzy, it seems like a little bit of a trend of commercial. And to, to do away with that corner there, that's, that's my only concern with this. I'd be in favor of all of it except for that zoning right there. And, you know, to, to carve off, you know, two hundred and seven homes and maybe that constitutes a dozen properties, to leave a commercial with the idea that maybe something could go in there retail. I, I'm nervous about being in favor of it for that reason.
I understand. When we looked at this property initially, we, we looked hard at this commercial area because basically on a square footage basis, you'd get a little better return out of commercial than you can out of residential. And so we really looked at it hard. And like you say, we met with the CBC people, we've met with Mr. Tandler next door. We don't believe it's got the potential that might be, and I think we, it may even be detrimental to some degree. Also, again, when the original owner was looking at this, he believed he could get access points all the way across here on Arrowhead Road, which is not the case. It's just not going to happen. I would like to see the property all zoned residential because I think it will make sense to do that. Should the planning commission decide that that's not in your best interest, and you've got to look for you, not for me, I understand.
Well, kind of both.
I would ask you to maybe look at it and say, well, maybe let's carve off two or three acres of the corner, but not have this large area which I don't think makes any sense at all.
Yeah.
Like you say, our, one of the concerns we have is as we look at what would land there, most likely scenario is a gas station or, you know, a tire store or something. I don't know that that's the best boundary for residential, but if you feel like that's what it needs to be, I understand, I just don't know that the size of the property there makes sense. If we maybe come back with a lot that was, you know, maybe three hundred feet across and a couple hundred feet deep, that would meet a commercial need, something maybe might even happen in the next five or ten years.
Yeah, yeah.
Larger one, I don't know that we're going to see that in our lifetimes. Maybe you would, I'm not going to see it in mine.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to really envision what that depth of that zoning change would be and, and I agree with you, maybe we only need half of that, you know, or, or what that looks like. And Dave, maybe you could help better with what a commercial setback would be as a buffer to residential. But I'd just hate to change something now that's got the potential, that's a main artery all the way out to I-15. And, you know, realistically, I see your neighbors to the east that are residential homes now with the potential of, you know, a strip of retail or commercial being there as well, which would make sense with IFA and the other, the other businesses. So, I mean, Dave, is that what Paul's saying? Maybe is, maybe shrink that zone, zone change up a bit?
Here's how I'd put it. Paul's done plenty of non-residential development over the years, so I think he, he's a good person to bounce this off of. But two hundred feet of depth seems like a fairly magic number to where I think.
And the frontage would be on this one, not, could get a back.
So you'd want to make sure that you had at least that much depth for whatever it is you wanted to build. Width then, in some respects, becomes a little bit less important, I think, but if you had.
If it's three hundred feet, that would accommodate at least.
You'd be an acre and a half then in that.
That would at least accommodate two different uses instead of just one.
I, two hundred by three hundred, I think is pretty functional.
You're talking about that frontage being on the, the Del Monte Road versus Arrowhead?
Yes, there's no access on that one.
What would you do with Arrowhead then? Would the homes go right up to Arrowhead?
Backyards will, backyards and fence.
But still, the, the non-residential project would have frontage on Del Monte, I'm sorry, on Arrowhead. And visibility, which would be the two key, certainly essential, so.
So, so if this were left commercial, any commercial developments that come in, any business, even a gas station, there's no way that a car could pull out from this commercial onto Arrowhead? It would all have to either flow into the residential or connect onto Del Monte.
All axes would have to be from here. UDOT, this, we've explored it.
So Paul, if, if we wanted to keep that commercial on that area, would that change any of your development there at all?
We would have to make some minor adjustments to lots on the residential. I think if that was your motion, I think prior to this coming to the city council, we could give them an alternate plan showing how that would work. My guess is we'd probably lose about seven lots. Not what I want to do, but I'm not going to die over it.
So Dave, you mentioned a while back, well, maybe last month, I don't recall, when this was kind of run through, that there was, um, we recently, I think on Canyon Road, approved a change from a commercial zone to now a high-density housing situation. And that this could turn out to be maybe a similar situation down the road if we leave it commercial. So my concern is, is I don't want to see that turn into a high-density housing situation. I feel like when you look at the corner on the, I'm going to use my pointer, on this corner right here, this is already housing with the wall and, you know, the IFA is down here a little bit further. And it looks just fine, I mean, I would just hate to see that we keep that area now commercial and then it ends up being what's happening on Canyon Road where we put in high-density right here when we had the chance to put in single homes in that area. I think the single homes fit better there. I do think that we need to look at, there's a lot of space here that's not designated to commercial, which probably should be. And that perhaps there's a better place to take that acreage that we don't want to lose and designate it somewhere else. And consider making this change now rather than down the road ending up with high-density. So that's just my thought. Isn't that what hap- I mean, maybe you can recap on?
Yeah, frankly, you know, that example that I used when we had the work session was pretty off the cuff. That was the first thing that came to mind. But your crystal balls are every bit as good as mine at what might happen down the road. I think that's, that's exactly what happened after almost fifteen years of that property being zoned for really a retail use. And eventually, it was because of some things that might unfold, kind of like, I think, things might unfold here with a really big commercial development happening out around the interchange. You know, whereas over here, we had the big commercial development happen at twenty-five fifty East and Canyon Road that kind of ultimately was what we thought closed the door forever on somebody wanting to go a mile to the west and do a little commercial development. You know, where kind of the concept of gravity starts to come into play, right? People want to be with the big things that sort of have some pull and not isolated. The difference maybe though between this and that, again, I don't have a right, any of this, can say with certainty what's going to happen. If you do have the signal here today, there are head trail, we will have higher traffic volumes on that part of the intersection down the road.
West primarily though?
Right, you won't have, and here, you do have some north-south connection, which over there, we just had the T-intersection basically. So I think this probably does have more potential, but I think you're right, I mean, that, that might happen down the road. Frankly, I think the idea of scaling it back is maybe a great way to, to kind of hedge a little bit. But I do suspect that if you've got a parcel that's two hundred feet deep by three hundred feet wide, that's not going to develop then at any point in the future with single-family homes. And that just really becomes a challenge to design distinct from the rest of the project.
Say what you, the very end of that again.
If, if they were to set aside two hundred feet of depth with three hundred feet of length along Del Monte.
Right.
For commercial, I don't think that in the future that would be developed with single-family homes. And all of it is because of the dimensions and expense and that sort of thing. Probably more likely that the push would be made for some kind of.
Commercial.
Talon, you know, if it's not commercial, some kind of multi-family site, something like that.
So if it was left as big as it is now, then that would probably still develop into a single home at some later point if we do do anything.
The bigger that it would be, the easier probably that it would be to design something that would make sense for single-family homes.
Just point out, we have no intention of building high-density here. Our plan is to build single-family homes, that's what we want to do. If we leave this entire area in commercial, we won't do anything for the, probably the first year and a half until we're able to relocate our Sun Rock operation. It will go up for sale and I expect after it's been for sale for ten years, we'll probably sell it to anybody who wants it. And I don't know what their profit is you're going to be. I, I'm willing to make the concession. I think we could make something work that's compatible with the residential on that smaller size basis. On the larger one, you know, you're the boss, we'll do what you tell us to do. But I agree with your concerns, I think it's much more likely end up being a townhouse project in the future than a new Walmart or something, it's just not located where it should be.
It, it's a great development, the lot sizes, the, the view area, it's, it's going to be gorgeous. And maybe, maybe I'm putting too much into the existing businesses are there. Maybe things will shift towards, you know, I-15 and where the Revere Hospital is. I'm just nervous about, I'm just nervous about doing that if that has the potential with Fritzy and, and that stretch there between the red and the blue to be retail. So that's my only. only concern. Does the other commissioner have a similar concern, or, or maybe not?
Think I have a, my, that is a concern, but I would have a bigger concern, similar to Tracy's. I'd be worried that if they leave it as is, that five years, ten years down the road, because it's such a smaller piece of property now, that it would become a high-density housing project, so.
Are you able to take questions at this point, since all this information is-
Sure. It's up to me, but you go ahead.
Do you wanna make, move-
We're at, we're already out of public area.
Very. So, over on River Bottoms, is that high-density there?
You're talking about?
The yellower area there.
There. This is not.
That yellow area, that dark orange, is that high-density?
Uh-huh, yes.
Yes.
Is it high-density? So I'm just trying to understand, as the plan is being looked at, the concern of not having high-density closer to the freeway, where you got high-density over there that recently changed, that's further from the freeway. I was just wondering, how does that weigh into your concerns for that becoming high-density in the future?
My question about how that would be?
Yeah.
Um, so my concern just is a little pocket of high-density just being developed, whereas the general plan already has areas that people over time have considered, oh, this is a good space, it's planned out, versus, oh, we didn't, you know, we don't have the crystal ball, but hopefully we think it through enough that we avoid little pockets like that, which we have all over the place in the city, but I feel like it's nice to avoid.
The other question I had is, just in this development, turning some of that commercial on the south side, southwest side into R-12, would you consider, for Brad's concerns, to just maybe expand the commercial up there as a trick?
Are you talking about here?
No, on, on this development, to preserve that. I, I go to IFA all the time, but is that something that you would consider as well, is just making that commercial area bigger, if you have that concern, to actually accommodate that development?
Oh, to the, to the east of the red?
So you're saying expanding this down into Armore, making this piece bigger?
You've got a pointer right there on-
The proposal, it was to turn that into R-12, right?
No.
No.
Oh, nevermind.
Not, not quite that far.
Forget my question.
I'm torn. I don't, I don't have an issue with high-density housing if it were to come into that point. Um, I mean, I, I can, to me, that's a good, I mean, if you're talking about the amount of traffic on Arrowhead Trail that we anticipate, uh, that we have equity, that we have today, to have high-density housing as a buffer to the single-family, it, it's, again, we've gotta here, we've got, when I say here, we've got single-family here, so it doesn't have a buffer. People live there. I don't know if there's any complaints. I don't know if you guys hear anything, probably not. They knew it was there when they bought, and so it's probably not an issue.
What if we changed designation to mixed use and give them freedom with the size they would use for commercial? Or would that be a terrible thing to do?
Well, that, that would've been helpful a few years ago, but right now, we're kind of, sort of circumventing the real general plan discussion where we're talking about zoning, which incidentally, on this scale, I think is actually appropriate. We have a development proposal, we have a pretty high level of detail about exactly what-
Use the microphone, please.
So, for me, the discussion of the general plan needs to be in a much bigger context of the whole corridor versus just this. I think right now, if you think it should be commercial, then we're going straight to the law with the zoning, and we leave it that way, or, um, if you wanted to zone it any other way, you know, now's the time to talk about the zoning.
I, I think my leanings would be to let it be residential, and, and that there's other places to put our attention for commercial all along, you know, that corridor that we can consider, um, that, so that's my leanings.
So my other thoughts with residential here, where I would assume this piece of property, because it's up above, you'd be able to put basements in these homes, whereas if you drop, you know, all of this down here, likely you're not gonna be able to put basements, but it's great for commercial, where they don't need basements. And so that's another reason why I think this makes sense to put residential with basements, so.
I still like what Brad's saying about this and keeping it commercial. I can see this being commercial all the way through here. This is not gonna go away. These, these, commercial businesses are not gonna go away. I think he's-
The residential will eventually push IFA out?
I don't think so.
I hope not.
I don't think so. I think they're a well-established business, and they've been doing really well. They've done it through the years, so I think Ace Rance is doing very, very well. This is definitely not gonna go away here. This is, this is really prospering real, real well. I, I think that this is gonna have some commercial bases one time, and the heart of coming into Spanish Fork, I think is essential. We've built a lot of homes around here, and you've got a lot of homes here. I can see a small service station or something being developed right there that will serve a purpose, just like it did up on top of Center Street and Spanish Fork. I, you know, back in two thousand nine, when I was on the city council, we approved that as a, as a commercial base, you know. Of course, now Sun Rock was gonna build a store there, want, you know, um, but I still think it still serves a purpose, and I still think it serves a purpose all the way down to this, this area right here, too, eventually. It might be ten years, it might be twenty years. I don't, we don't know that. I, you know, I've not, but, but according to what was talked about today, I think, I think it was, it will serve a purpose, and I don't think we're asking for too much to continue on with, with a little bit of commercial, so, so it can continue to work. But that's my feelings on it, and, uh-
Dave, can I ask a question? Maybe you weren't around at this time, but when Quail Hollow was put in, obviously, all of these homes right here are, were at that time, before it was developed, same situation as what we're looking at right here.
Uh-huh.
You've got commercial with IFA and whatnot. Was this conversation repeated at that time that that development was going in?
I have no idea that that was before my time. Things are a little bit different, just because of the topography there, though. If I remember right, there's a pretty dramatic drop from Arrowhead Trail down, so for that, uh, I think that might've been why, if that wasn't considered for non-residential use, that might've been why, just visibility and access and things would, would be a challenge, but now it wasn't.
So I just have a question, and trying to move forward here. Um, can we, um, make the recommendation for the zone change from the rural residential to the R-112 and continue the commercial decision, and actually have our work session and discuss some of the other ideas before making that recommendation? Is that something that we could do, or would that totally make a mess of your plans, or, I mean, it's one month, so.
One of the problems that we're facing right now- We need to move forward. One of the issues that we're facing right now is making this crossing with the sewer across State Road in this location. Uh, that's a big, big deal. We've been able to negotiate with UDOT to be able to do an open cut there, but there's a very limited window that we can do it in, and it's actually, like, in two weeks is when it is. We, we need to have some sense that we're gonna be able to move forward with the project. Uh, that isn't gonna cost us the entire million, three million, seven, but we'll probably go through close to four hundred thousand dollars in a couple of nights. We need to have some surety of when we're moving forward before we do that. If we don't do it now, we are probably gonna be held off until probably at minimum next April, and at that point, it will no longer be an open cut, it'll be a bore. Reason they're allowing us to do an open cut now is they are, have a scheduled road project for this fall that would tie the asphalt back together. If we have to go to a bore situation, probably adding another half a million dollars to the cost of the project. At that point, I don't know that we can, we're at the limit right now. I don't know that we can absorb that and make it move forward. But if possible, get in.
You're still willing to do all this other construction and that, if we just happen to say, we don't wanna rezone that, to keep that as-
As I say, I think the reassurance that I would have for it is that we're okay with everything. Commercial portion is the only question.
I worry this question. Should we make it smaller? Should we do residential altogether? I mean, right now, you know, everything else is gonna be good to go.
Dave, when's the city council meeting that they'd vote on this?
Depends on what you do. It could be in thirteen days, two weeks from last night, so.
Can we have a work session?
Uh, I'm free certainly some night in the next thirteen days, if you guys want to be, I mean, literally, we could make that happen.
If there is a way that we could move forward, get approval on the subdivision-
Well, that's what we're saying, Paul.
Plus or minus this, but have the council move ahead, too, not, not delay it so they have to come back and revisit it. I guess, like I say, you're the boss, we'll-
This is, we're, we're recommending to them what we feel, okay? This is a recommendation to the city council. The city council will make the final approval of what happens, but we're, like me, I would just say, I recommend that we keep, we, we would approve the plot plant, the plot and the, and the preliminary stuff, except for this, that upper section.
Well, you're the boss.
You know, that's what I was-
If you go out and look at the side, I think you'll realize, with the exception of just this little spot right here, access back here isn't gonna work. It's, there's just no way to get onto the property, and it's just, it's gonna be a dead zone, I think. As Tracy has mentioned, it's probably, it'll sit there for a while, I mean, we'll go ahead and do what we're doing. Ultimately, I think really the only practical use of it at that point is probably gonna be some kind of a moderate or higher-density product.
Back in two thousand nine, as a city councilman, we approved that as a C-2 with the, with the roads going out on Del Monte. You know what I mean? I mean, that's, that's how we figured it in the first place.
And, and again, the, the owner at the time thought he could go back to UDOT and get the access. Without the access, it just doesn't fly, but you, you, you need to make decisions.
Richard, does, does reducing it down to this two hundred by three hundred, does that seem like a reasonable solution?
Just, you know, I just hate this. There's some type of commercial basis that we had, you know, there, when we, when we worked so hard on it in the first place.
Is there a way to show on the map the city's potential future commercial growth? You got that on the general plan, just where we currently do not have commercial, but expect down the road to have commercial?
We did, yeah.
Cory, just a second, we'll get it up here, but, uh, maybe the, the long and short of it's that, that this blue that we see here, that's mixed use, but for a few different reasons. Just talk a little different.
Sorry, Danny.
That's probably not a bad, yeah.
Show that, show what we- That's the master plan?
Yeah, this is, so we were looking just a minute ago at a window of this, so this is the whole city. Arrowhead Trail and Main Street, the one with the good part of the Main Street corridor, we'd expect that to develop non-residentially, whether it's with professional offices and uses or retail, but also in the mixed-use zone, we do allow residential development, so we'd expect some of that as well, so that you don't just have a continuous corridor. Again, I'll use the example of State Street and Warham, that's something I've tried to not mimic here. Um, the fact that we have commercial here, honestly, I think that's as much as anything because of the zoning that was in place when we updated this, rather than us necessarily being real forward-looking, yeah. Um, but clearly, this is the, I've told this several times, I think it's true, that this is the last undeveloped I-15 interchange on the Wasatch Front, and obviously, there's considerable growth happening in Salem, Old Mill's, Upridge, that'll continue for years, along with Payson, uh, east side of I-15. Uh, traffic, we think someday will be such that there will be a lot of retail opportunity around that interchange. My guess is, is that's probably more than a decade in the future, maybe decades, but, uh, that's why we've designated a good part of that area, really for retail development, uh, with the idea that that's sort of flanked by maybe a mixture of some retail and professional office kinds of uses, and then the highest density residential development that we have in the city next to that. Um, and this being said, and we'll talk about this with an annexation proposal tonight, but, uh, things like Upridge Drive, uh, coming up from the south when that's constructed, tying into roads that also have good north-south, uh, access through Spanish Fork, uh, planning for those intersections for non-residential development, I think's really important as well. Um, I don't know if any of that helps with the question that you had, looking at it from this perspective, but we've tried to be proactive, um, in identifying sites where we think there's commercial, in particular, retail potential in the future, even at locations where currently roads aren't in place and that sort of a thing. The site out here, we required this land to be zoned commercial with a big annexation that took place seven or eight years ago out here, knowing that there'd be big north-south roads along with an expanded state highway. That road now is just getting built, um, and we're seeing that commercial development kind of, or opportunity sort of ripen, but, uh, again, I don't know if that helps, but-
So, this intersection right here is where you kind of foresee a larger commercial development taking place than what you've got right here?
I think we will see retailers interested in doing something here before this. Just maybe, I'm looking at it in terms of just sequence. This would be the first one that would probably catch people's eye.
So say we leave this as is, then, the developer or property owner comes and wants to sell what they've got here, this gets zoned commercial, you're saying this likely would get developed and have commercial, which then, what would the effect be on this property, you know, even more, once you've got more commercial down here? If, yeah, it just seems to me, in my opinion, that as more commercial becomes available along, my pointer's not working, but along that road to the freeway, it may become even more difficult for this commercial piece, especially if it doesn't have an access to Arrowhead, to actually get developed. So, I don't know. That's, that's just my opinion. In, in my mind, it makes more sense to me to develop as the residential with everything else that they've got planned for it currently, so.
All right. Does anybody wanna make a motion?
But, that being said, we're not the ones that have the final say.
Correct. We're making, we're a recommending body, correct?
I'll make a motion, and see how you guys feel about the motion. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the plot and this zone change here, and ask the developer, before next council meeting, to incorporate a two hundred by three hundred spot there, and let the council know our concerns as a planning commission. It doesn't sound like it's even unanimous, maybe it's maybe more me and Richard, but our concern is retail. Let them take their opinions on it, too, and they could make a recommendation to do it all residential anyway, but at least that way, I think we'd have a voice on. Would that be appropriate to make that kind of a motion, Dave?
Totally. Appropriate, yeah.
Okay, so that's the motion I'll make.
I'll second that.
And we got a motion from Commissioner Tanner, and a second by Commissioner Davis. Let's do a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Davis, please.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Nay.
So three to two, and go to the, the city council.
Can I just clarify the motion, so we would maintain two hundred by three hundred feet in commercial, balance of residential?
That's a recommendation to the city council, okay?
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a DAC Swenson annexation request.
Okay, we chatted about this a little bit, uh, I think, a few weeks ago, maybe now, I think about it, maybe we didn't. We did have a chance to drive by the site earlier tonight and talk about some of the, the changes that are happening in the area relative to infrastructure. Project that we just talked about certainly plays into that bigger picture of getting some essential utilities provided out closer to that. And I, every time I say Salem Benjamin interchange, I like the sound of that less, that somehow. Half of it is Spanish Fork. And that, that interchange out there, we anticipate things to change maybe pretty rapidly in terms of development potential. And, and the potential for that to be positive for Spanish Fork City in terms of the type of development that happens, I think is pretty strong. And I'm just mentioning this before we go through any details, annexing land out towards that interchange, I think really does need to be a priority for the city. And as we've had different discussions over the years, we've talked along those lines that it should be a priority to follow the city's annexation policy plan and annex in the direction of that interchange as, as the opportunities come up. So staff is recommending that the proposed annexation be approved. Very clear about that at the onset. The only things I think that we'll talk about in terms of questions, you know, that really have to do with, with zoning and with the general plan a little bit, you know, very much hand in glove with the discussion that we just had about the Sun Rock property. I think most of you at this point are familiar with the area that we're talking about. This activity that we can kind of see here, I think those are the initial stages of the Revere Health Facilities Construction. So the subject property is just north of nineteen hundred South, that's the Spanish Fork address, from the Revere Health Building, right on that corner. Incidentally, we think this probably is a corner that at some point in the future could have a traffic signal at it. Just photos of the subject property, nice, flat, currently vacant land, considerable development potential. There's the plat, it's about twenty-six and a half acres altogether. And let's just dive right in to talk about some of the things that are a concern for staff. I think most of you understand that the R four zone is something that, that we as staff are very concerned about implementing in the right way to make sure that the first, really, what for us would be a high-density project for a lot of communities, it's not high-density, but for us, when we start talking about eighteen units to the acre, that's, that's a big deal. And, again, we wanna make sure that before project develops in that zone, we, we've gotten things right from a design perspective, from a location perspective, how the property's configured and different things like that. So, again, I'm gonna try to be a little bit succinct. The developer initially proposed to have the property zoned two different ways. At the time of annexation, I think this plan illustrates well what the, what that request or proposal is. Essentially, you'd have the front, and I'm gonna guess here and could be corrected, you know, something between, well, maybe just talk about this, this is probably on the order of a hundred and eighty to two hundred feet of depth. So a strip along the nineteenth South frontage, zone commercial two, zoning that would accommodate, you know, maybe retail uses, gas station, things like that, as well as professional office buildings. This part of the proposal doesn't sync up real well with the current general plan designation. Hence, sort of the idea of studying things a little bit more broadly. But certainly, I think it would be a mistake to allow for residential development, at least right around that interchange, or sorry, right around that intersection. This, this could be certainly a very heavily utilized intersection, given the land use on the south. What happens to that road going both north and south in terms of its carrying capacity? So, I mean, in short, I think staff and the applicant see eye to eye in terms of preserving at least some of this area, whether it's a kind of a linear zoning approach or something, maybe that's just consolidated a little bit more around that intersection. Certainly on board with that and appreciate the applicant's desire to have a portion of the property zoned commercial. What configuration that takes, I think that's something still that needs to be talked through. We discussed just briefly earlier tonight, you know, maybe the idea that some kind of strip all the way out to the interchange next to that road should be set aside by designating it for some kind of non-residential development on the interchange. That certainly is an approach that could be pursued. Or we could maybe just focus at the, the places where we think there'll be traffic signals and the kind of four-way traffic to support retail developments and do it in more of a nodal kind of fashion. I don't know what the right answer is, I don't know what ultimately your vision in the city councils would be after studying that a little bit more. But again, that concept of having some part of this property zoned commercial sooner than later, I think makes a lot of sense. The remaining part of the property where it's, it's designed with this design, I think the applicant understands there probably would be a need to make some changes to that design. But where they're, they're looking at eighteen units to the acre, I'd be very concerned about doing that before we have a plan for that that in every way meets the city's zoning regulations. And really where also we have the builder, maybe it's the builder-owner and the operator all in one of that project, ready to talk to details of the development and different things like that. In other words, I think it's premature at this point in time to, to zone the property for residential development, whether it's, it's R one twelve or R three or whatever. But certainly where the idea is that it be developed with the R four zone, which again, we haven't even implemented that anywhere in the city yet. This would be the first place, I think it's, it's premature for that. So again, and I'm gonna be redundant just with how the presentation will play out, but staff's recommendation ensures that the property be annexed with rural residential zoning. That's what the DRC recommended. I will say this, I do like the idea of zoning property for commercial uses sooner than later. So if we wanted to talk about some commercial zoning at the time of annexation, for lots of reasons, that does not cause me, or I think others on staff, the kind of concern that the residential zoning would. So if it was a situation where you felt comfortable with a rural residential, commercial kind of zoning combination at the time of annexation, I think we're comfortable with that. But it'd probably be my preference to change the general plan first as part of a, a broad look at that whole corridor. Even if that means that the city were to initiate a zone change for this property, you know, maybe just in the next couple of months to commercial, after it would all be annexed rural residential. So I'd talk about those things, just really, those are the, the main things that we've talked about as potential concerns for just the, I mean, it goes beyond the annexation into the development potential. I will say this though, that we have suggested that, I think is one of only three places in Spanish Fork, it is appropriate to plan for high-density residential development out around the retail development that we'd expect to see in the vicinity of the interchange. One example that I've used and have had in my mind, that you guys can remember Pleasant Grove and Sam White's Lane, interchange that was constructed in Pleasant Grove about fifteen years ago, maybe a little bit longer ago than that, or a couple of car dealerships down at the interchange, some big professional office buildings behind those. Pleasant Grove took an approach that's not entirely unlike this, what they're planning and really what helped to kickstart the, the non-residential development out around the interchange was some high-density development that happened that paid to get the infrastructure out there. And a lot of times, it's that residential development that comes first in terms of being financially viable and there's maybe thinking in terms of strategy about how to get an area prepped for retail development. I think that's why it makes sense to talk about, you know, maybe some fairly intense residential development as part, part of that overall approach. So from that perspective, what the applicant's talked about in terms of employing their R four zone, I think does sync up with their plans. From my perspective, it's just a matter of the right order, making sure that we're not vesting a property in such a way that it causes us some regret down the road. The growth boundary, let's talk about that and get into B S S. I think this is something that we look at if we have a work session on commercial zoning or the general plan and commercial designations, we talk about the growth boundary as well. This line here is the growth boundary in its current configuration, at least as it relates to this area. A sewer lift station, I think, will be constructed in this vicinity here within the next year that will allow this whole area to be served. And in short, with that, I think it makes sense to talk about expanding the growth boundary to match whatever that, that lift station can serve. Right. And also, I think it's, it's time to do that now, at least to talk about that. Again, we already talked a little bit about that. Talked about the concerns that we have. We've talked about, you know, really just kind of one exemption that we think's worth talking about relative to this annexation. We need to build a, a lift station in this area and we're opportunistic people, you know, city staff. When an opportunity comes along where we have an applicant that wants something from us and we need something, that's when we jump into action and say, okay, can we do some kind of quid pro quo thing? You know, it might be, we'll approve your annexation if you dedicate some land to the city for a sewer lift station. And I just kind of broached that subject with the applicant last week and didn't expect a real warm reception to that idea and it's kind of what I got. That's something maybe we can talk about a little bit tonight. But that's really the only thing that we've talked about is staff, in terms of something that we might wanna address with the annexation. Otherwise, I think it's just a matter of zoning. And again, we see a lot of value in annexing the property sooner than later. So, in a nutshell, I think that really is about, about all that we have. And of the applicants here tonight, with this being an annexation, we don't typically hold public hearings. We're not required to.
Could you walk through again that process of annexation? How, how does an annexation reach our, our plate here?
So several things happen before you see an annexation for the first time. Applicants petition the city for annexation. When we receive a petition, Kimberly here reviews the application and a few different parts of it to see if it conforms with requirements that were given by the state, state law. And once she finds that we have a legal annexation petition or application, the first thing that we do is we take it to the city council. Really typically without a lot of preparation or anything, we simply take it to them and say, in essence, will you consider annexing this property? And maybe the dozen or so annexations that we've seen in the last ten years, I think everyone has been received with a yes on the part of the city council, which it simply says that they will allow the city to study that annexation and determine if it's something ultimately that, that we want to follow through on. So, once the council says they have accepted that annexation for further study, that starts a couple of things in motion. There are some different entities, basically service providers, that we notify of the annexation proposal. And there typically is a sixty-day protest period that they're given to provide any protests of the annexation to the city. And we go through that. Typically, it's during that time that we as staff do some different things. We prepare an annexation feasibility study, again, something that's required by state law. You have a copy of that with your materials tonight. And provided that we haven't received any valid protests at the conclusion of that protest period, we typically, well, historically, as far as I know, we've always scheduled a meeting with the planning commission to review annexation proposals. Now, that I'm aware of, that's not something that we're required to do. I think it, it only makes sense to do that because one of the things that we do as the city at the time of annexation is assigned zoning. We're talking land use and that, I mean, we believe is certainly really the purview of the planning commission. So we've taken annexations to the planning commission historically for a recommendation on zoning and typically that really becomes a recommendation on the annexation and the zoning. At the conclusion of that, we schedule a public hearing with the city council. So that's the, the body that we have public hearings with for annexations. And they're free at the conclusion of a public hearing to do whatever they want. So the city's under no obligation to annex property or to deny annexation proposals. It's a legislative act and ultimately, the council acting in their legislative capacity has all kinds of deference as to whether they, they wanna approve an annexation or not. So that's the long maybe version of just the process that we go through to, to get something ready for that formal action.
Thank you for the explanation. It's always good to be reminded of these since you said we haven't had very many. So, any questions for staff?
Yeah, real quick, Dave, so the properties that are already in Spanish Fork City limits that are to the east, I guess, of this annexation are currently zoned rural, rural residential.
Currently zoned rural residential, in fact, everything west of Mill Road is zoned rural residential.
Any other questions?
You said carry all the way down to the freeway?
The zoning.
Annexation, is all Spanish Fork, eight progress?
Uh, Spanish. Let me see if I answer it with this. Spanish Fork's annexation policy goes all the way to I-15 and beyond. So we've essentially, in a formal way, have stated that the land, you know, within that policy at some point in the future will be in Spanish Fork. We have agreements with our neighboring municipalities, both Salem and Payson out in this area, to where we've agreed upon what will be the, the mutual boundaries between us as, as those three different cities. And this annexation will not go all the way to the interchange. That's.
The annexation process only happens when a property owner says, I wanna annex my property into the city. The city doesn't actively pursue annexation, is that my understanding?
We have a few times.
Okay.
You might remember a couple that we've done, you know, really trying to prepare lands for industrial development. One north and kind of west of the airport, another one in the vicinity of PDM Steel. So we have done that. In those cases, we've worked with property owners to where they've, they've been involved in the petitioning process that we've done the heavy lifting, if you will, to make those happen. So that's happened as well, but particularly.
Generally.
For any kind of residential development, you know, again, there's really not much in it for the city. We're, we're very much so, I think, favorable and willing to accommodate growth, but we haven't been very proactive about annexing lands for residential projects.
Any other questions? Does the applicant wanna come forward and add anything to the presentation? Could you tell us your name if you would, sir?
David Cloward.
Cloward.
Do you have my file?
We have, well, instead of you wanting, yeah.
It's the one that shows the various blocks of ground and the ones that are for sale and not for sale.
Do you know what chip the talking things are?
No.
The one thing that I'm concerned about, I really appreciate what Dave said and he spent a lot of time on this and study and I agree with most of the things, that the one thing that I'm struggling with is, is the idea of conveying land to. one thing that I'm struggling with is is the idea of conveying land to the city for a lift station. One thing I want to kind of make you aware of is is you look at that.
There should be a button right where your thumb was at the front there.
This is basically up to here is the current Spanish Fork City boundary. And so this this piece of property is available for annexation simply because it joins the city existing property right here. In my mind, you know, this property I'm interested in doing something with. This one is currently on the market. This one right here, in fact, the ones that are purple are currently on the market. The green one is where the clinic is. And it was recently sold, and this one is with some. That's green. This is yellow. It looks kind of the same. But you can see, in my mind, the potential development along this corridor because of the location of the sewer lift station. By the way, the elevation here is higher than it is here. So that's why the the lift station is being planned right here because it'll flow that way. And of course, it'll flow down that way. The concern that I have is I think this becomes a key. And if this doesn't move forward, it's probably going to have an impact on any of these others moving forward in my mind, unless you can get this whole group of people to annex. Just seems like that's what it is. Now can we go to my my initial plan? My concept plan.
Can we talk a little bit more about the land for the lift station?
Do you know which one it's in?
Sure. Because I think I can maybe help lessen your concerns on that.
Okay. The reason why I'm concerned is this has just come to me right now. So I haven't had a chance really to address, and I'm not sure this is the place to address my concerns.
Might be right.
Okay. And if it's not the right place, then maybe I'll stop right now. But I will say, that's going to probably be a deal breaker. And I can tell you right now why. Do you want me to do that?
Sure.
This area right here, the reason why that's designed that way is that that potentially is wetland. I have I have gone through the delineation process. I've had it with the Corps of Engineers until since December 9. But I think it could be months, potentially even years.
Take a while.
And so the idea, if you take that away and then try and put a lift station, I don't know where you're going to put it, but it certainly messes up putting a service station here. And planning is suggested, and I think they're suggesting some next, that if you're going to have this kind of a development, you really should have a business office and a, basically, what do I want to call it?
I'd say a professional office.
No, no, it's a recreation area.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're talking about a clubhouse and that kind of thing?
That you would put your business office and your clubhouse right here, and and this being the service station. So I don't really see how how you're going to put a lift station in there.
Can I can I ask, what's the appearance of a lift station? How much property does a lift station take up?
What's the kind of thing that we haven't even discussed?
Are they, do they vary in appearance and size and everything?
I've seen some pretty attractive lift stations in my career, but others that are just pretty plain Jane, so.
So there's a lot of different things you could do then with lift station?
And how much ground does it take? Where does it have located?
Do you know, Corey, size-wise, footprint-wise, about?
Right now, we we've sent an RFP out for design. Our guess is a quarter acre or less in that ballpark. Most of the infrastructure is underground. There would be an above-the-ground building for controls, operator access, those sorts of things. The typical lift station we have in the city is a CMU-type block building, quite small, that would have a generator next to it for backup purposes. At this point, that's what we're pursuing.
We could do a little better than chain link. We typically would secure those somehow.
And and location.
We have one currently in the city that-
We have very many. We do have-
Three or I saw Dennis walk in.
We've got some really small ones.
There's Spanish Field subdivision. That's where all this affluent goes there. There's also two up on North Main, one right in front of the county jail that you probably don't realize is a lift station, as well as one, I don't know how to describe what business is there, but just south of the jail, a little ways from Main Street.
I completely appreciate Mr. Cloward's concerns. He's right. I sprung this on him last week. Very little information. And that's really still where we're at. Like Corey said, we don't have anything designed yet. We do know that we need a facility. Let's ballparking it still a little bit.
We can even draw. It's fairly flat out there. A lift station gives you a lot of ability to move around without a without significant grades. It's pretty flexible as far as to make sense up higher or down lower.
This area right here is about two feet, and when you get up here, it's about six feet higher than here.
I think partly to Mr. Cloward's point and to his concern, we don't want to put the lift station right on the corner. And we see that as being pretty valuable property to put to a different use. The number that was thrown out in a meeting earlier today was that that might be able to be as far as 300 feet, you know, from the intersection.
There's a lot.
It certainly could be on the other side of the intersection as well. As I understand it, for example, if we're not able to come to some kind of terms, at least in concept, to site the lift station on part of the property that Mr. Cloward's working on, one of the things that the firm that we're going to contract with will be taxed to do is to find a site for the lift station. And simply, I think they'd probably be looking to the neighboring property to the east to find a place there to put it. I don't think we have any preference at all about where it goes, except, again, we don't want it right on the corner, either side of the intersection. And, you know, where I've been told it can work within some distance of that, just because of the topography, we have that flexibility. The land that needs to be provided for the lift station is something that gets paid for. There are a few different ways that that can happen, although it's not uncommon. Hasn't been for us, and it isn't for other cities, that when somebody wants to annex, you you compel them to give you land. We've done that for roads. We've done it for detention basins. Lift station potentially is not any different. But whether it's on Mr. Cloward's property or across the street, in this case, we've planned on paying for that land. So that's something that's I didn't share last week. I didn't know. So that might soften the blow a little bit, or make the concept a little bit easier to swallow. And the bottom line is that, as we've talked about tonight, we need a site for the facility. And we'd hate for that to become any kind of hindrance on being able to proceed with that project. And again, that's where we, frankly, we always try the quid pro quo kind of an approach. When a developer wants something, we try to get what what's needed at that point in time. And that's where we're at with the discussions that we've had with Mr. Cloward. I will also say this. Again, the annexation for us is a priority. And certainly, none of us on staff want, you know, maybe as much as a quarter of an acre for a lift station to be a deal breaker on annexing more land out towards that interchange. So I think it's something, probably something we need to talk more about. And if it can't work, we do have another opportunity to the east. We have not condemned land for really anything, whether it's been expanding power substations, building roads, or anything like that. So we'd certainly want to work with somebody to somehow come to just a simple sale kind of an arrangement and not have to use any domain.
So if the-
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say, if I could mention one more thing on the lift station, some of the needs out here, it provides sewer, but a lift station needs water and it needs electricity. So it's part of that project to bring some of those utilities out to that area as well, which which is a benefit. Otherwise, you know, the development will have to go bring some of those utilities down. And anyway, so it's, it can be a win-win for for both sides in my mind, so.
Mr. Cloward, I've got a question for you. Do you mind coming back up? One of the things I noted in the in the DRC meeting minutes from the DRC meeting was that the the development plans are five to 10 years out. Is that accurate? Is how it was depicted in the minutes? But what is your timing, I guess?
I don't think that is accurate at all. In fact, I think that that project, once the sewer lift station will be a go.
Okay.
In fact, in the DRC, and maybe I'll quote David, I hope he doesn't mind my view of this, but he said in the DRC that on a weekly basis, he has, people are coming in wanting to do this kind of a project. As I looked at it, I went down to the one at North Main. Maybe you're familiar with it, Outlook, that apartment complex. I went in under the idea that I was interested in renting a property. This was on June the 15th. Two-bedroom apartment. They said, well, how long do you, how long, how soon would you want to have it? And I said, well, as soon as possible. They went into the register and they said, well, maybe we'll have something the end of August. I mean, that's how much demand there is for this product. Most of the people here are not as old as I am. I can tell that. But you're, you probably don't fit into the millennial age either. And those, the millennials, that's what they want. This is exactly the product they want.
So I've got an annexation question. After the city council votes to approve an annexation, is that final? Does the property owner at any time have, could they back out? Could they change their mind? You know the answer to that?
They can withdraw their petition. Yes.
Even after the city council has voted?
No, no. Once that happens, then the ordinance that makes that annexation effective becomes effective in a certain number of days. And short of a council taking some other action to to revert that, that is done.
Any other questions for staff or for Mr. Cloward from the planning commission?
Our our job is to come up with a zoning for this.
Correct.
It's the council's job to come up with-
Yeah, do we make a, I mean, it's a little bit odd, but do we recommend anything as it relates to the annexation itself?
The way that we've done it, and we don't necessarily have anything on the books that says this is the procedure that we follow. But typically, yeah, we've we've looked at the planning commission to say, we recommend that the property be annexed. And also with the, we recommend that blank zoning be assigned to the annexation. So typically, that's been what we've looked for you to do, just as more a common practice than anything that we've we've defined.
Bring him in as an RR then would be good enough, and then he could start working on his concepts of what he really wants to do, at least to get annexed into the recommendation to the city council anyway to do that.
You know, for whatever it's worth, I like that the best now. And I also, like I've said, I really appreciate Mr. Cloward's desire to have commercial zoning there. I think that if we study that corridor for a couple of key reasons, we'll probably talk about change in the general plan, to put that on the plan. And I would certainly say that for any properties along that corridor, we have the commercial general plan designation for it. It'd be in the city's best interest to go ahead and initiate zone changes somehow to match that where we can, particularly where we have property owners that are willing to have that happen. And, you know, do that so that Mr. Cloward wouldn't have to go through a process to change the zoning, or at least make any effort to do that. And again, I may be a little optimistic here, but I think we would be talking about that as early as October. So that's that's my thought, just in terms of what's best on the zoning.
A pretty good day, played that?
So are there any neighbors that are here regarding this issue?
Can I make a motion?
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we-
Public hearing?
There's no public hearing on this one.
Okay.
All right.
You're fine.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and make the recommendation that the proposed annexation be approved with rural residential zoning.
Our motion from Commissioner Tagg and a second from Commissioner Davis. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Euler.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the Warner annexation, which, can I make a quick thank you for sticking around, patient, especially the kids? So we appreciate you being here.
Once again, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Got quite a bit of ground to cover here, even though this is an annexation that I know you guys have talked about several times. Staff has spent quite a bit of time, past year particularly, working through a number of different things with the applicant relative to the annexation and some deficiencies that exist in the area relative to some of the facilities that we have, development plans and proposals and timing and various things like that. I'll start with kind of a general overview and then maybe get into some more details. This is a big deal. So to start here, the red line defines the area that we're presenting tonight to be considered with this annexation. Some of you guys know that this doesn't match the boundary that was presented the last time. We talked with the planning commission about the proposed annexation. But I think it's kind of interesting that this boundary comes pretty close to matching the original petition that the the Warners hit it a long time ago. And so I want to just talk about that for a second. One of the things that we're concerned about as staff with annexations is the overall configuration of the properties that are included in terms of whether they create any areas of the city that end up being inefficient for us to provide services to. So any islands or peninsulas, different things like that, as a general rule, we work to steer clear of creating anything along those lines. We, if if things were perfect, everything would be perfectly square relative to how we grow. Of course, it's never close to perfectly square. But and that's why, when we saw their initial proposal, we talked about, boy, it sure seems a little inefficient to leave this area here, still in the county, or it was something like that. So we we said for for staff to support your proposal, you're going to have to bring the boundary all the way across South Lane to River Bottoms Road to take all of that area with it. The applicants did that. And to make a long story short, over the course of the past many months, we've looked at ways to scale that back. We've had concerns expressed by property owners in this area here about being included in Spanish Fork City. So for that purpose, kind of reverted back to the original petition area. And for whatever it's worth, at least this is what I'm telling myself to try to feel more comfortable with this. And I don't think this boundary, as is shown, entirely reflects exactly what what's intended with the annexation. But in essence, River Bottoms Road to where it currently enters the city here, that roadway would stay in Utah County. So they would continue to maintain it and provide the service there. And in that respect, I think that's somewhat functional, at least as the city aren't taking on any additional responsibility to do what I just said, you know, provide any maintenance of that particular roadway. And at least in that regard, kind of following the boundary the way that we we'd have it here, really matching the west side of River Bottoms Road and that right-of-way line. here, really matching the west side of River Bottoms Road and that right-of-way line, there's some logic behind that, in my mind. We've, we've done the calculations that we go through to certify annexation petitions, make sure that the necessary valuation of properties and property owners is represented from those that signed the petition initially, to make sure that we have a valid petition with this configuration, and in short, we do, and it's, it's not by a small margin with this here, so that's what we're presenting tonight, the kind of scaled-back version from what we last spoke with you about many months ago now. We've worked through a lot of issues, like I said, with the applicants, they've provided a lot of additional information since the last time that we, we talked, and I'll get into more of that in a minute, but just some, some photos of the area, particularly, this is the property that's owned by the applicants, and that we'll talk about the development of in a minute, just another version of the, the annexation plan. This is what the applicants have asked us to consider.
We've, we've got an updated version, Dave, if you want to...
Do we? Yeah.
This, this was sent earlier today that incorporated some of the comments we had had.
Okay, so it's the first time I'm seeing this.
Yeah, sorry.
Free to get. So maybe I'll just talk big picture for a minute. This property, the, the annexation area is a general plan two different ways, for medium and high-density residential uses. This part of the annexation, which is 30 acres, of what now is about 110 acres, so about a third of the annexation area is all designated medium-density residential, general plan, and that designation has a density range of five to eight units to the acre, I believe, and I'll double check to make sure I have that right. I knew the applicants were going to be in the four-ish units per acre range, it looks like that's where they are with this layout, so again, they're speaking big picture in terms of conformity with the general plan.
They're less than what the general plan is.
It's less, or it's at least on the lower end, and I'll double check that range to make sure I have it right. That's probably not the most important thing for staff from a development, kind of potential perspective and what it might mean for the neighborhood, but the other thing aside from that conformity that has made us feel more comfortable with this approach than some others that we've seen for this property, we are talking about main floor living here, it's simply, in essence, a project that is aimed at empty nesters, essentially kind of a, I don't want to say retirement, but basically earmarked at a 55 and older type of a, a market. There are things that the applicant could do to restrict occupancy in the project to a certain age group. We haven't yet gotten into a lot of details about exactly what their plans are there, but in all, that's what I understand the concept to be, and I'll let them correct me if I, if I have any of that wrong. The applicants have provided a traffic impact study that you received a copy of last week, it's great reading, sort of, but it all boils down, the 150 pages that we have, to saying that access from the development to South Lane, utilizing the South Lane Main Street intersection as, as the primary point of access at least, that can function without having a detrimental impact on that South Lane Main Street intersection until you get about halfway through this project. And for us, I think as staff, we're, we're looking at it a little bit differently to where we'd say that maybe instead of a 65 home point, which would be the halfway point, at about 50 homes, which is, ties to a standard that we have, you really need to have a second access to the project, and that could come in a variety of different ways. The most significant one eventually would be volunteer drive, so...
Is there a way to see where this fits on the annexation?
Do you just want an overhaul, Dave, or?
I think if we go back to the general plan map, that might...
Whoa, I have no idea what I'm doing.
Cool, though. Nice work, Court.
I have no idea, okay.
You're both down there.
Yeah, that's how we're rotating.
Yeah, this, this will work, so the subject properties we're talking about here, this is Bradford Lane here, that's the east boundary of the plan that we were just looking at, and this is the northern boundary right here, and this is the western boundary, South Lane being the southern, so it's this, that area right there, and 30 acres. I apologize, we, in the future if this comes back, we'll have the drawing file, we can superimpose it on this and that sort of a thing, so.
So where would volunteer, what's the route from?
So this is point A, let's say.
Right.
Fix point, know where that's at. Mr. Beasley's here tonight, I don't know if he wants to speak or not, but he has represented to some extent.
I think he's gone.
He, he had to leave.
We've talked with him about how volunteer drive would traverse this property here. We've talked with the property owner here about how it would cross that, with the idea that, you know, ultimately, this is what I think, this is the current train of thought, and I think it's the best idea that we've talked about yet, there would be a roundabout here, so volunteer drive would come in sort of a straight east line, not perfectly straight, over to that roundabout, and then south down to South Lane, which at that point, it could do a few different things going south, if we ever needed an additional roadway through the River Bottoms.
So why, sorry, why a roundabout right now? What are, what are your ideas? Usually a roundabout has four entries or exits, where are the other two?
Connecting over to River Bottoms Road is going to be really important, and I think to the north as well, but for, for what we're talking about here with the anticipated just volume of that road, we think it's a great way to make a good sharp turn, which is really what, what we need to do there.
Rather than a soft curve.
Exactly, which really, I mean, one thing that we're trying to do with this is to protect the eventual development potential of this property here as best as we can, it's the theme of the night, but because we see that as having some commercial potential, so having that road not slope through here somehow, which is what we talked about doing for years, and instead being able to have it come more, just do easterly through there, and then more just do south, that's more the logic behind it than go in other directions or anything like that. So again, that's the area, we're seeing this project, we've seen previous editions of it, you guys have that in your materials, from a big-picture perspective, again, staff feels comfortable with what the applicants are proposing to do, I believe it's consistent with the general plan, kind of the outstanding items that we still have, there's a little bit of work that I think we still need to do to finalize plans for some improvements that would take part in concert with Utah County on the Millrais Canal and the intersection of Bradford Lane, River Bottoms Road, simply to enhance the safety of that, but aside from that, and maybe just providing a more critical eye to the latest concept and working through some details on that if need be, I think staff's certainly ready at this point in time to recommend that the annexation be approved. From a zoning perspective, dents of units per acre sometimes matter, so we have a few different zoning districts that we would say are consistent. Sorry, I'm not going to find the current plan, right? Did you insert it in here?
It's separate right here.
With 4.24 units per acre, R1-6 zoning is what we'd need to assign to the property in order to be able to develop this as a master plan development. If it were, if it were less than four, it'd be R1-8 zoning, so it looks like this is an R1-6 kind of development proposal, I do know that that is.
R1-6 allows up to how many units per acre?
That allows up to 5.39, I think, 5.4, let's say. But again, we've talked about a lot of different things over the course of the past year, I'm trying to really be succinct here with this presentation.
Come back to the boundary of it, I just want to ask a question on the boundary. So can you talk about the alignment of this property line? I think this makes sense, because that's the south side of that road, but how does that line up with properties in that area?
You might have to let the applicants talk to that, they have a better feel for those property owners and exactly why that came out.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you. Okay.
You'll state your name just for the record, please.
Oh, Vicky Bradford.
Thank you.
Okay, this has been a long process trying to make a lot of people happy, but I think we've come up with the best scenario there, that the people that really didn't want to be in the city are not in the city. So, I don't know how to run this, oh, like that, okay. So this is Bradford Lane, and this is where the development will be. Okay, these people here still wanted to be part of the city, and so we just made a recommendation to Dave, and he thought that was okay, that if we, if we did it like that. We even, I mean, we thought about other people in this area here that might want to be down in here, but it didn't seem logical, because then it would leave just a road, a little tiny slip of land in the county, is how we came up with that. This lady here really needs to sell and get away from, from there, she's a single lady, and she just really wanted to be in the city so she could be out. This is Miling Hales, I doubt he's going to do anything with his property right now, but just stay right there, but to leave her in, we kind of needed to include his property too. But that leaves out the Dewberries down here.
Why did you leave me out?
Oh, did you want to be in?
No, I did, how many times have I talked to you?
Okay, can we, can we leave?
Twenty times, I'm sure.
Okay, Wilbur's property is right here. Yeah, can he be in? I don't know.
Reasonable to me, I was going to say...
Straight east from there, right down, something like that.
We can talk about that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Wilbur, if you would be in, I thought you just signed to be nice to me.
You what?
I thought you just signed to be nice to me.
Signed to be nice?
Yes, since I about drove you crazy. Okay, so I think Wilbur wants to be in, so that would be that piece, little piece right there.
Another thing is, you're leaving the night, and...
That's not...
Wilbur's is right on South, South Lane. Oh.
His is right here.
Nope, nope.
I don't, I don't think...
Are there two or are there one right here?
We'll pull that out.
Seventy-six fifty down, where you're shy, and I'm right on to the left, and right there.
Just right here.
No, a little before there, the other way.
Up here?
Right there.
Okay, so all of this is yours? So what about this?
That's owned by Robertson's.
And are they in or not?
They'd like to be.
So this is what we're seeing here.
Today it's shown along these property lines.
Okay, this is yours right here, Wilbur?
Yes, true. That's my property right there.
Okay.
What about the one in the south?
This is Robertson's.
Right.
Okay, so they both want to be in, so it would be more like that. This is Thompson's, they do not want to be in, all of this is Thompson's.
No one's ever asked me if I want to be in or out, then I'm in there as well, so, next Thompson's.
You want to be in?
I don't know, hey, we can talk about it.
Oh, I was told that you did not want to be in.
No one's asked me.
Or is this, can one person make all the decisions here?
Well, I don't think so, I was told, I was told, I was told that you didn't want to be in. You're Matt Johnson, right?
Yes, ma'am.
But on the map, it said the same was notified, on that map, where it had the yellow, whatever, he said...
I was never notified either.
He said they were never notified.
I just come to these meetings to listen to, and I've asked city questions, and I'll kind of repeat what I was going to hear this morning.
If you have a comment?
Nobody will give you an answer.
If, if anyone has a comment, let, let's leave it with...
Okay.
Mrs. Bradford for now, but if any of the others have a comment, I'll have to speak into the microphone.
Okay, I did contact Mr. Vincent, and he asked me not to contact you, that you, none of you were interested in being in.
No, you said, I told you they were out of town, and you'd have to talk to them, they weren't to talk to me.
But you said you were not interested in being in part of the city, right?
No, because I, I don't own that company anymore, it's turned on some kids.
Okay, I got the impression I wasn't supposed to contact anybody in the family. Well...
Can I make one comment?
Yeah.
Just real quick. With your comment there, we did, remember, if you remember talking, we says if we keep you at an RR, you could keep your animal rights. We, we told you that at the very...
We need to know how many, because I know a lot of it works out, where if you don't keep an animal there a full year, a full time, you move the animal off.
You need to come forward to have, if you're going to make a comment, I need you to come forward so that...
What's the next question?
I understand.
Just so the television can pick you up.
You need to be a TV star, that's exactly right.
My name's Jeff Vincent, yeah, we wanted to know, because a lot of times with your city ordinances, if you have the animal there full-time, you can keep it there, it's grandfathered in, but if you take it out, and then you can't bring them back. Well, my father feeds out his calves there, so they're not there during the summer, in the winter, he'll feed them out, we'll butcher them, and do what we do.
Is that even with rural, rural residential? I can't say rural.
There's no...
There's no, you can have, if it's zoned RR currently, you have no animals, five years down the road, it's still RR and you want animals, you can bring animals in, okay?
We didn't get that answer before.
Yeah, you could drive up on 1700 East, and you still have horses and everything else right in the middle of the city.
One of the things that I should have touched on, just, I mean, I talked about zoning for the Bradford property, but our recommendation is for all of the other properties in the annexation, whatever else ends up being included, that those all be zoned rural residential, which I think is the most consistent zoning district that we have in the city, to what they're currently zoned as in Utah County, and all the specific question about animals that we just talked about, there are no limits in the rural residential zoning, so grandfathering and that sort of thing doesn't even really become an issue.
Anything else, Mrs. Bradford, that you'd like to add?
Well, we, we really want to annex the whole thing, but we, the opposition, I understand them too, I just want to say that, I understand why they don't want to be there. I am totally fine with putting the whole area in. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Well, it's a city, I know that's what we want, we'd rather have it all filled in like that, so it's not like a cherry stand.
So, annexation, again, the city doesn't approach the landowners generally, it's the landowners that approach the city. So the Bradfords obviously have approached the city concerning their property, I don't know if it's then the rest of the landowner's responsibility to, to also approach the city, or are they leaving it up to the Bradfords to speak for them? It sounds like there's a little bit of miscommunication there. I would suggest that any landowner that has interest in annexing to the city, that they approach the city directly and not go through a third party or whatever, and then, you know, why don't you come up and speak to that?
I don't know how many meetings I've been to.
State your name if you would, sir.
Wilbur Stevenson, my name.
Thank you.
You're probably worth pointing it, but this has been going on for years, at least five or six years, and...
And the meetings we've all had has been that there's going to be, the annexation would include everything east of this highway to Salem. Highway ninety-one, is that it? Whatever it is anyway. Because the house that I used to live in, the city boundary went right through the kitchen. On, south of that was hot, north of that was the city. And that's been forty years ago.
I've seen a movie like that.
What's that? Richard knows all about it. But then, not to drag this out. But the Warners, several years ago, had a feud with the county. They was going to close their business down there. We went to a meeting and we all supported the Warners, the Bradford's rather, in their construction company and all so they'd have time to take care of the situation at hand. And this is what it's come up to at this point. And there's still no situation solved. I don't know how, I mean, two or three or four months ago, I got a letter from the Spanish Fork City. Do you want to be annexed into the annexation? I signed it, sent it back. I don't know what happened to it. And here we are. I get cut out for what reason.
Just by a show of hands, if I can, how many of you are property owners that are in the annexation area? Is there anyone that did not receive a letter from the city asking about annexation?
There was no letter.
There was no letter, okay.
It's the problem.
So what, so what's being, yeah, what's being discussed? Is that maybe a property owner asking other property owners?
I have no idea.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Go ahead.
Before you go, is it, is it the property, is it the annexation requesting person, family, whatever? Responsibility to determine agreement with being involved in the annexation or not? I mean, because, so, I mean, if I, I apologize to, I got to back up here for a second. Their property is here, right? And, no, I'm not talking about yours, I'm just talking about the Bradford's, okay? So Bradford's, as I understand it, is this, is that correct? Okay. They couldn't, because they would be creating an island, just by themselves be annexed in. And so that, that's, so through a discussion process with the city, determine a, a basically appropriate boundary to meet state law requirements, right? Am I saying that correctly? Okay, Dave's shaking his head, thank you. From there, then, the applicant then has to reach out to the neighbors who are part of that proposed boundary to confirm whether they want to be in or out. Am I, am I getting it?
That's confirmed with some kind of validation. If they want to be included, then they're petitioning. And we did that.
And that gets submitted to the city, that, all those, those signatures?
Yes.
Okay. And so it sounds like at this point, it may be just a misunderstanding through the shrinking back process of who wanted to be in and who wanted to be out. That's kind of what it sounds like to me. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're fine. I'm Mark Warner, one of the applicants. Yeah, when we originally petitioned, we, we only included two Bradford Lane, Bottoms Road. City wanted us to expand that, as he mentioned, over, over to here and include the property so that it didn't leave that island, the peninsula. So we did. But in order for us to get approval, we had to get over fifty percent. But once we had over fifty percent, there was no necessarily obligation to continue to talk to additional property owners. So, which is why some of them may not have been contacted, but that was not our obligation to do that. So we'd got more than fifty percent as the, as the city wanted us to do for the whole.
Again, as state law, correct? Thank you.
For the, for the whole thing. But there's been an awful lot of opposition to some of them that did not want to be included in the annexation, did not want to be part of the city. How the boundaries that got shrunk back to this got, got decided, I don't, I don't know. But I, I don't have any problem with anybody that wants to be in to be in. That's not our, our decision. Certainly if Wilbur wants to be in, I, I mean, I have, I have no problem with that. Our, our concern is our property. And to make sure we have enough signatures and enough approval that we have the fifty percent, which we did. But I have no, I have no problem with changing the boundary anywhere you want to change it or the city wants to change it. So we're, you know, we're, we're petitioning to, to get the annexation approved and then work with the city council and, and you to, to approve the, you know, the development, how we'd like to develop, so. And, and to make sure we, you know, that, that we adhere to whatever density, whatever zoning that you, you decide is appropriate, so. So when it comes, comes to the boundary, we, we have known.
All you care about is that that piece of property with your name on it is involved, right?
Right, but, you know, and we're, we're happy to accommodate whatever. We, we've talked about, you know, we'll, we'll straighten Bradford Lane out. We will, we did the traffic study. We're more than happy to put Volunteer Lane right through the middle of our, our property to accommodate that in the future, to accommodate the, the travel. Also going to be a, you know, a walking trail along that to accommodate that. So we're trying to do everything that, you know, the, the city would like to have us do. And we're trying to accommodate everything to, to make sure that the annexation meets all those, all those rules. And so, and it has been a long time trying to get, as, as Wilbur said, trying to get this, this all settled, so. So, yeah, I have, I have no issue with changing the boundary to include whoever wants to, wants to be included, you know, so. But, yeah.
I got a letter two, three days.
Come forward if you would, sir. Good catch.
I got a letter two or three days ago that on the fifteenth, there's a city council meeting to approve this annexation. And if I'm out of it, where do I go then?
So it'll, they'll, we will make a recommendation to the city council with regards to that and we can include, I would assume, that that boundary be adjusted to include your property at your request.
So, on that note, so if this is Wilbur's property, he's obviously here to speak for himself. What about this piece right here? Is that property owner here to get them included for us to move forward tonight?
Okay, they, they both recently died.
So who owns that property?
I don't want to be a thorn your side, but I want things to move forward. We've, I don't know how much time we've killed for nothing, but let's get it done.
So, without, without, without them here to speak, if we were to propose something to extend that all the way over? I mean, do we just do?
I, I think we could.
Over his property because he's here? I don't, I don't know what to do.
I think enough, sorry, I, I think there's enough, there's over fifty percent.
That's right.
If you include them, so you, you, you can decide. You guys can make that decision.
They, they would be notified, would they not, Dave, for the city council meeting?
We would be happy to make sure that that happens, yes.
Great, thank you. No, I'm.
Any questions for me from?
So Dave, why can't we just put it into public hearing and as each one gets up and talks, they can tell us where the, the ground is? And then we can use that.
If they're in or out.
As I say, we don't have to go into a public hearing, but we can invite that, certainly.
Let's just do that.
I know, but, but I know, but they can, then they can add it all.
And let me just mention something first. In terms of whether this might be system included or not, maybe including all of South Lane.
Makes sense, agreed.
Right. Okay, I was just going to tell you, okay, this is, my friend owns this property right here and she just died a few months ago. And so, and her husband died a couple of years ago. So it's in the process of being passed down to her kids, yeah, down to her kids. But they do want to be in. Okay, so that's Robertson's in and Wilbur wants to be in. So it's just this area right here. And I'll let the others speak for themselves.
Yeah, so I think, so if I understand correctly.
Oh, Jim Nixon, yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the boundary, he would be still here, coming down that direction over. I don't want to get you in the head there and then down that way, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
But there was still, that gentleman wanted to be in?
Possibly, yes.
Well, where's your property at?
Can you state your name?
So, yeah, I'm Matt Johnson.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks for giving me an opportunity. So, I'm.
You a science teacher?
No.
Because I love your shirt.
Thanks. Well, I was anticipating going to my karate class tonight, but I didn't realize this was going to be so long. So I came dressed for that, but here we are. Anyways, so my property is right there. Do you believe that's it here? This piece is mine? Yeah, these two pieces here are mine. I'm not opposed to, I'm not in or out, right? And I love growth, so I'm, I'm excited about all, all that I'm seeing. You know, growth is awesome. It does a lot of things for everybody in the community. My concern is this road here, there's really no need for this road for the community if you guys annex all this in. There's just, already we have fifty mile an hour traffic going past those houses. And really, there's no need for anybody to be on those roads. So I propose that, as you guys think about it, change something here so people stay off that road. If you, and leave us out of this equation. It would be really awesome to, there's, the only people that should be on that road are the people that, I mean, it's like a long driveway for us. And currently, you guys are talking about adding a whole bunch of more neighbors that are going to be all over that road. And there's really no reason for anybody to be on that road. And again, I'm not saying I'm in or out, I'm just throwing out stuff. The pros and cons, I'm not aware of the pros and cons of being in or out. I mean, the little piece of land we have there is pretty awesome. It's awesome. There's no neighbors. Do what you want to do.
How long have you lived there?
Twenty years. The house is part of the Vincent family, though. So I, I come from Sandy, so I'm a transplant, kind of, you know, helping out the, the area, is what I always say. But the house is actually an old Vincent home. It's been there since nineteen forty-eightish or something like that. So it's part of the family. And my wife grew up in that house, so Lisa Johnson, or Vincent and Johnson now. But, so, yeah, so I've been there about twenty years and we purchased this since I've, I've moved in. And so I'm not in or out, but if you, if you, you know, force people to do their thing, you know, we need to think about that road. We need to think about how dangerous it is already. It's already sloughing off into the river. There's all that going on. But I'm really interested in hearing the pros and cons about being in the city. So, I don't know who I talk to. I don't want anybody speaking for me. I don't want Walden speaking for me and I don't want the other lady that come up speaking for me. I'm going to do all that for myself. So we can carry on and just give me a good.
Dave Anderson would be the place to start.
Yeah, yeah, I like Dave. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Great. Come on, come forward if you would.
And it's Sahr Smarson. My mother owns a piece of property, right? The property line comes off the hill next to hers. Not that, it's pretty close right there. Have that little piece right there. And she's not against the annexation. In fact, she would like to be in the city limits. But she doesn't want to cause any problems. So discussing it with her today, she said I would like to because I get electricity. She gets electricity, water and garbage pickup. It costs her more because she's in the county. And the line is right twenty-five, thirty feet north of her house. It's one of those split right down the middle of the house. If we're going to talk about adding annexations, I told her it wasn't worth the fight. You know, going through the, for the little benefit she would get. But if you're talking about it, I would like to add her to it. Because she's on the east side of the road. That's all I have to say. I grew up there. I have a lot of reason to keep things the way they are, but it's not going to be stopped, I don't think. We, all above our house up there, we used to hunt pheasants. Now look at it. It does grow. But if they're going to talk about that, we'd like to be annexed in.
Mr. Anderson, aren't you keeping track somehow of yea or nay?
Yeah.
Or Kimberly?
When we're done, we take a minute, just like congratulations.
Okay, great. Others that would like to come forward, I, I know you've been anxious, so why don't you come? Yep.
Nina Dewary.
Hi, Nina.
I just have a few questions.
Great.
Isn't that a flood plain all along there? Like along.
I, I can turn on the map. There's. This is all online as well, but, so the, the flood plain is defined as a hundred year flood plain where FEMA has regulations and mandatory flood insurance and things is, is this blue or color down in here. This grayer is the, what they would call the five hundred year flood plain. There, there's not regulations from FEMA. The city does have regulations on height of floor, you know, no basements would be allowed. But how high the finished floors would have to be built to avoid flooding, so. If you ask FEMA, they would say we all live in a flood plain. So, so it's, there's the potential to flood everywhere. But on average, one in five hundred years is their statistical analysis of how often the potential it could flood would be. Does that make sense?
Sort of, except for this is all wetland right here, isn't it?
Correct. Well, it appears to be, I.
I mean, are you planning on trying to develop over here or is that off?
There, there's different regulations with wetlands and, and the Army Corps of Engineers and several others get involved in that. So typically, no, you don't develop wetlands. There's ways to, say, buy credits or transfer wetlands and then fill in. I mean, that would be up to that property owner when they want to develop, if they ever want to develop, to work through those regulations.
My other question is, I mean, River Bottom Road, I mean, the city, what kind of cost is it going to be for them? I mean, the gentleman was right about the people that come down this road. I mean, there's been deadly car crashes, from what I understand, in the past. How is it that you plan to have any sort of high density and involving River Bottom Road? And isn't there that canal that's right there? What do you plan on doing with that? And how do you think, because you would have to widen this road, which means that you're going to infringe on the other people's property. I mean, what's the plan?
So, at the time of annexation, the city doesn't then start changing canals or widening roads? That wouldn't happen until the property owner wants to develop and then they have the property owner pay for that, is that correct?
We certainly could.
Okay.
Certainly could, and that, we've been, we've been around. Thinking back, the gentleman said we've been talking about this for years, this annexation, you know, going back. I think the initial hangup that we had really was River Bottoms Road and what was reasonable in this case to expect the applicants of the annexation to do in terms of sort of addressing issues that have been raised in terms of safety concerns and things like that. And maybe we've just kind of mellowed as staff over the years about how much we think needs to be addressed. I think frankly, it's more a matter of getting a better understanding, just to use River Bottoms Road as the example, on what sort of the long-term solution might be to alleviating traffic that now uses River Bottoms Road and kind of what changes are really impacting the increases in traffic on River Bottoms Road, which really is growth on the east end of the city, much more so than what we think this will do. We, there won't be large numbers of residents from the Bradford development using River Bottoms Road to go east. It's much more so people and the growth there.
I'd be wrong if, if there's fifty-five and older, they're all going to be going to the golf course.
That'd be that AM, right? Right at ten o'clock. But, yes, again, the council has all kinds of deference at the time of annexation to require whatever. And if property owners don't like that, then they can withdraw their petition and move on. But typically, we, we try to exact as much as we can. At the time of annexation, we've talked about lots of things here and we're really just down to that one intersection that we think is something that requires immediate attention. And I think we're well.
Talking about that intersection there.
Right, and that's at least our recommendation in terms of improvements that should be made as part of the annexation.
And really, all that we can respond to or react to is what's within the boundary. And really, all that we can respond to or react to is what's within the boundary of the annexation. So, I mean, if this stays outside of the boundary of the annexation, then there is no plans, there are no plans, excuse me. And so, all we can re-react to is what's kinda proposed for here. And I think the transportation plan, and Corey, correct me if I'm wrong, takes it volunteer and then out South Lane. So those are the two ways that I think alleviate the, the development pressure there. Is the intention of those larger roads to handle that capacity, so...
Is that going on to Diane's land, the road proposal?
No.
So nothing is gonna go in on the other area?
I, I don't think that that would be the case.
About right here.
So, cause I was wondering about eminent domain or anything that, I mean, there was rumors going around about that, so I was just curious. The reason that I moved to Spanish Fork, I just wanna put this out here, is...
You wanna grab the microphone and pull it towards ya?
So, the reason that I moved to Spanish Fork is because I wanted to be outside the city. I wanted to have farm animals and homeschool my kids. So I kinda wanted a harm, like a hobby farm, and, um, and to be able to have that environment for them. And one of the beauties of finding this piece of land is that it was all this green space, that includes your land. And I'm just, it's a sad thing to me, because if it's intended to be developed, it kinda ruins our view. But I was thinking it even ruins some of these people's view that built on top, that enjoy that. And then the fact that property tax would go, I mean, I'm not sure all the benefits here of putting something like high-density housing. You guys, I think you've done a wonderful job with planning, having everything around I-15. It's been wonderful not to have to leave Spanish Fork in order to get what I need. But it just seems like for the sake of the Bradfords, I mean, you guys only had like, from what I understand, you didn't have any plans for another twenty years to do this. And so, all because they want to develop their land, it's, it's becoming this huge issue. I don't understand how it's a benefit to the city to do high-density housing, even here. It's like, I could see it right here along the main road, maybe a neighborhood, um, there, but not apartments to empty nesters. I mean, to me, that's just trying to tap, you know, get money from it. I don't know. I mean, it doesn't, I don't see it being beneficial to Spanish Fork. And the other thing I was gonna mention is that, um, River Bottom Road, even though it's got its issues, I think is one of the jewels of Spanish Fork. I think it's one of the most beautiful things, that you guys are not like Orem, you're not like Provo, you're not all in this compacted commercial area. You're unique compared to all the other places, you're not out as far as Salem or Santaquin or Payson. And you've got, um, the rodeo up there. And people, from what I understand, Spanish Fork has been really viable based on all the animal activity, you know, with the rodeo and the markets and everything. I see that as an asset. And I just, you know, it's kind of like, almost like a Sunday drive right there. But I've wondered, you know, why not expand the parking area to facilitate that even being a little bit bigger? And, you know, I, I just don't, I don't quite get the logic here. I know that people wanna be included, but I don't even see their logic, even the guy who was saying that the, the lady pays for, um, you know, extra for trash and recycling, well, you're gonna be paying extra for property taxes. So that just doesn't, I don't know. I'm seeing all this high dens, you know, development on the outside, which makes total sense to me with Habitat Humanity, that whole road over there, because it's connected to the vein of I-15. With Spanish Fork, it's unique because you've got six and you've got Main Street. But Main Street has maintained its cuteness. I mean, it's what makes Spanish Fork unique. And so I really like that, that we have both things. But this agricultural area is just such a beautiful green space, and I'm, it just, I think it's sad. I don't, I don't like the idea of it. And the other thing that, and the thing that really bothers me...
I'm literally sick to my stomach here, cause you're destroying our jewel.
Well, the thing that really bothers me right here with the Bradfords, or the Warners, is that I haven't been here long enough to know what the history is. But I drive by this piece of property and I'm like, how on earth can you operate a giant commercial, whatever it is that they're doing, putting gasoline, oil, whatever that's falling out of their vehicles into there? I mean, they have heavy equipment on there. And so this is still county right here, right? They're in, still in county? So they've been operating illegally, no matter whether their neighbors agree with it or not. And then, now that they're up to sell and to profit from it, it's like, the neighbors around here, whether you wanna be in or not, are still having to sacrifice that beauty or that space because they value it. For the sake of the Bradfords who've been operating illegally for however long, and now they don't have any accountability. Because from what I understand from the lawyer with the county, is that they, um, now that they have an annexation petition, or petition for annexation, the county can't enforce what's going on over here. It makes no sense to me. So I just, I wanted to put that out there. I don't agree with going all the way over to River Bottom. I don't even think it benefits Spanish Fork, honestly. And I think you guys should really cash in as a city on having that green space and that area and that nice drive that goes all the way down to the River Walk, and I just love it so much. And I just think it's something that's unique, and I would preserve it. So, that's all I wanna say.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm Jim Dewberry, Nina's husband, and just for the record, we, we own the property right here, and what she said is absolutely correct. We moved here, it was unique, I could still get to work within a reasonable amount of time and we could still have a lifestyle we want with agriculture, animals. You know, this is a lot of fun, this whole corridor right here, all the way through. Everything she says, I second that. It, it is probably the jewel of Spanish Fork. Everything else is just cookie cutter, just plain generic big box stuff. I'm not saying there's not beautiful homes and all that stuff. Our home was built prior to eighteen seventy, I'm told by the neighbors, it's the oldest occupied home in the area. And when I look at the plan that when I came here five years ago, just like she said, this was all green space and twenty years out, and it made total sense. You know, this talk about islands, it, you know, if you had an island of jewels, what's wrong with that? This is a green gem that goes into the city. I don't see any of the parks that even touch what you can get by going down here, jogging, whatever, going to the River Bottoms, going to the River Walk. The fairgrounds right now, they're bursting at the seams. There's people working their horses out in the street. And so I'm here, when I came here, I thought, okay, I'm not, at least I'm not being roped in. And now I'm seeing another chain reaction where I can see how this is going, where you're gonna try to, well, if, if, if these people wanna be in and then we really can't create an island, and, and then we defer to the city council and they vote and, and put us all in anyways because they don't see the logic of... But truthfully, I'd like to ask, what is the benefit that you saw when you went in and changed the plan from being green space to being high and medium-density housing?
We can't answer that, cause none of us were on the planning commission when that happened.
What is the benefit now as you see it? Because I, I saw resistance just to a small, little tiny piece of high-density housing on the other side of Main Street, close to the freeway, that, you know, that Mrs. Tag was talking about. But yet, we've got a proposal to slam a whole column of high-density housing and then backed up by medium-density. I sat in a meeting here a few months ago where Mr. Davis was, was discouraging a gentleman from putting high-density housing next to another Bradford property, because he said it wasn't close enough to the freeway. And it also was gonna destroy their value of their property by having townhomes next to their somewhat rural property. I don't see how this is any different. I see this is the most bizarre use to cram right in there. High-density should be by the freeway. Is there a reason why this is different? Why has it got this far? It feels like the, the tail wagging the dog. We've got a need for a family, which I respect and understand, wagging the whole planning commission.
Back in two thousand, I don't know, Dave, was it nine or ten? When I was on city council, we, that, this is a designated area that's not in the city yet, but as we made our general plan, we, we used that as a, a, a higher-density type of area, right through that area. That if it ever got annexed, that would be part of the situation, that, that would be a higher density there. And the rest of it would be low-density as it went into this, into the River Bottoms eventually. All of the River Bottoms eventually will become Spanish Fork, but right now, it's just county, just like you are right now. But in, in our general plan, in our designated areas that we eventually might annex, might annex as people like the Warners and the Bradfords wanna bring their property in, that's what, that's what they're based on, is, is what we've, our general plan. The general plan for the Bradford area was, I think, an R-112, if I remember, if it ever came in. But I could be wrong, I can't remember. I can't, that was, heck, I've slept since then. But anyway. Bottom line, when I was on city council, as we, as we went through the mass, our general plan with the planning commission, that area was designated for, I think, an R-112 if we ever annexed it into the property. But that was a discussion, it wasn't a, you know, I mean, it was, it was something that if a property owner ever brought it in, we wouldn't go any hu- higher density than what that was supposed to be. Anyway, that's what I think I remember, if I can remember. And so, we've talked about this area, and that's about where it stops, right there on that south road, you know, and everything else seemed like it was lo- a lot lower density, in fact, open spaces, open spaces area. And especially running along the river there, where you have your pl- floodplanes and stuff like that. That was all open space type of planning. Now, things change as, as city councils change and everything else, and people wanna develop their property. Excuse me. They bring it in and they talk about it, and it might change, you know, thirty years, you know, twenty years, it might be a little better. I'm sort of with you a little bit on, on this other section. I like the lower density, you know, and, and open spaces there. But as the city council back in two thousand ten or eleven, I think maybe even it was that long, we talked about the Bradford property and the Warner property and that, and the, and the McCall property as a little higher density at that point, and then it would space itself in open spaces. So this has been talked about a long time ago.
I think the, conceptually from a planning perspective, I think the idea is to try and create, you know, this is, this is all commercial, right? This is how it's designated. And the idea of, of how do we transition from a commercial use to a non-commercial agricultural use? And the way to do that is by stepping the density, is, is that kind of the, that's kind of the general thought process that we've had as a planning commission for several years. So I'm sure, I'm, I'm trying to read between the lines here a little bit, Jim, and, and understand why they would have considered putting high-density here as a, as a buffer between this level of density and the higher, more intense use of the commercial.
Where do you see that pattern in the rest of the city? I, you know, I, I, I don't...
Look at the interchange. You referred to that, it's the exact same concept.
Right. So you got more intense commercial use, you got a mixed use, dens- high-density density, medium-density, low-density.
It's, that's I-15.
I, I understand, I, I, so, the, the same concept has applied throughout the city. You've got this Main Street with mixed use, higher density, lower density, commercial, mixed use. So it's, it's a transition process that's been implemented.
Those are all around the main highways.
Regardless of location, Jim, it doesn't matter. It's the same concept of trying to, trying to step and protect the agricultural uses as much as we could, while still allowing for development rights.
You're having developers right now in this area coming and asking us to put a higher-density, the annex and higher-density, this area right here, and then slowly...
Absolutely, and I respect, I respect that. I've been in real estate, I understand, you know, if, if, if we had our way, we'd put high-rises everywhere and collect endless rents, and I get that. But I, but from the perspective, I was hoping that the council is not coming from a developer's perspective, is actually coming from a long-range health of the city, what makes sense for the city overall, the plan. And you see this, the rodeo, the fairgrounds is a gem right there. And how does it serve the city to surround it with high-density housing? How does it serve it to box it in where it can't grow? And so, I don't understand that.
All they're talking is that strip right there, high-density. I don't think this sub, this Warner Bradford is high-density, is it?
Yeah, are we doing anything tonight, high-density?
I'm not talking about that, but right now, the current situation, that was all green five years ago. When I looked at it, it was fi- I don't know if you have a plan from five or six years ago, but that was all green through there. And so I'm wondering...
When did that general plan designation change? Do we have two thousand ten, so seven years ago?
Maybe I saw an old map, or maybe I just don't remember, forgive me.
That's all right.
But, but that's kinda where I'm at, is, is I feel like the rodeo already is, is, is a problem with as far as it's bursting at the seams. People are working out on the, on the streets with horses. And I'm just, I'm just curious why, you know, I know images convey a lot, but if you were to show the way it really is right now, currently, it's, it's all green space going up in there? There's nothing, doesn't look, there's no problem with it, doesn't look bad at all. So, you know, I think, I, I just don't understand that. So I would propose that, that at the very least, my property be left out of this, and I don't want it to be just deferred to the, 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 um, the council to then rope me in at the last minute because we passed something up that doesn't make sense. I respect everyone's desire to do what they wanna do. But personally, I, I feel that it's a mistake on a city level and I definitely will do everything I can to prevent staying, to prevent being annexed into the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Please, Mr. Warner.
Sorry, Mark Warner. You know, you look at the advantages to the city. Now, the demographics around here, there's a lot of aging population, there's a lot of people that need housing. They would much rather have senior housing where they don't have to deal with taking care of lawns and property, have a homeowners association be able to do that. You know, you look at, you guys talk about this as, as the jewel, because you got a lot of green space. Well, it, it's not yours, it's ours. And you can, you know, I, I understand that you want that. I don't know how long you've owned your property, but it's been, and this has been in our property, our, our family for, since the eighteen fifties. And so, you know, we see a big advantage to the city to be able to provide that senior housing for those who need it. There's a huge demand for it. So the roads would be improved, the access would be improved if Volunteer Lane comes through. It would, it would really reduce the amount of traffic that's on River Bottoms Road, because Volunteer Lane would be the, the main, main road down through there. So, so yeah, there's, there's a big benefit for the city, especially bringing Volunteer Lane across, because that's gonna increase your commercial potential over along Main Street. So, so, you know, the difference between what some property owners think that is a great benefit to the city, having this green space, well, I can tell you that there's a whole lot more people that would much rather have that senior housing available to them and be able to live in a place where, where it's beautiful, where it's, it's nice, nice homes, and be able to still have, have access to, to, um, the city amenities. So, good sewer, water, utilities, good roads, improved roads. So, you know, a few property owners who don't wanna be in the, in the city, my, my opinion is fine, let them stay out of the city. But they shouldn't dictate what happens to our property, uh, just because it's green space. So, thanks.
So this lady here and then I think Ms. Garcia, the one with the black hair. I don't know your names, I'm sorry. You got matching shirts almost.
I'm here to support Diane. Um, I work for Utah County and I do review the annexation boundaries. If you can put up the latest... As is...
Make sure you talk into this microphone if you would, please.
If these landowners are included, the annexation can still happen because... If these landowners are included, the annexation can still happen because how do I say this? This description doesn't work. I've already done a preliminary evaluation on it. I work under the Utah County Surveyor that, and helps approve these annexations. To me, this description's sloppy because they didn't follow the road or, um, property ownership through here. So I would suggest it's rewritten anyways when these people want to come in, be added in. And you mench- it was mentioned that they wanted to stay on the south side of that road, so it's still a county road. Well, the description will need to be written that way then. If all these property owners over here want to stay out of the annexation, that's still a legal annexation as far as the state's concerned.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, so based on this current one, so it, and I know you discussed it, and I saw you on your little field trip today and you parked right there, and there's the discussion that something needs to be done there. From what I understand is, um, some of my property to be, um, taken to fix that corner. So, you know, with respect to the Warners, their property's down here, I'm up here, I see what happens on that corner. Diane Garcia, if I didn't say that. I see what happens on that corner. I see what the problem is. The problem is people cutting through here to get up to the east side, and they can go faster here instead of going through the city. So the problem is, there needs to be a stop sign there, there needs to be slower speeds on these roads instead of thirty and thirty-five miles an hour. Um, cows get out on the road, horses get out on the road. There are joggers and bicyclists and people pushing baby strollers and people walking their dogs. That road is basically the size of a trail. Okay, so, so to take my property on this corner and widen it or do whatever somebody else has decided is best, um, did not get the input of, of someone like me who sees what happens there. Okay, I'm the one who's, who's out there on the road cutting my weeds and almost gets hit by cars constantly. Okay, and that's because they go forty and fifty miles an hour. I'm the one who files the insurance report on someone, a sixteen-year-old girl who was driving here so fast on a winter night, was supposed to turn this way, and instead ended up out here in my field knocking out nine of my fence posts. Had nothing to do with that corner, it had to do with speed. Okay, if you cut off that corner, they will just have more speed and they will then end up upside down in that canal, which will be a far worse problem. Okay, so there's that. So when you talk about River Bottoms Road, I don't know if you know or, or can do the layout of the ownership, but I basically own River Bottoms Road from, um, the Vincent's place all the way to that corner. So, if you left me out, or if you decided to annex me in, then vacate that road and I own that whole thing and don't let anybody drive through there. It's a canal running through. That's an option that nobody's ever talked to me about, but that would be a good option. That would diminish the traffic on that road, nobody needs to be driving through there. I own it anyway.
It's a, it's a legal, uh.
You can vacate it. The Bradford's talked about vacating Bradford Lane, why can't I talk about vacating River Bottoms?
It's still a legal easement.
So, um, the fairgrounds. You know, as I watched the Salt Lake City rodeo opening for, for, uh, Days of Forty Seven, that is an awesome fairgrounds. They have done an awesome job to improve that, and I'm hearing talk of more and more, um, ventures and activities and events that will be moving up in that area. I am worried that our fairgrounds is, is going to get all dilapidated and sloppy and we're not going to have events. We're not going to get revenue. That is something as a city and a community, we need to protect and we need to have a five-year plan, a ten-year plan. What is our expansion? How many other communities have lost their equestrian centers and their fairgrounds because development went right up to it and there was no way to expand? The other thing is, I know that PRCA really enjoys that, our arena. One of the reasons they enjoy it is because it's a really nice big arena, but it's in this nice rural setting. So it's kind of cool. You kind of have the better of both worlds. You have a really high-tech arena, but you have this rural setting for everybody, you know, all the Texans and everybody, you know. Believe me, I see all the trailers, they all drive up and down, they're driving here trying to figure out how to turn around. Okay, which they can't, and they end up way down here and sometimes at the golf course. So, um, and then when you talked about RR, I don't want to be RR if I'm sucked into this. I want to be agriculture. Can't I be agriculture? Someone said everybody would have to be RR. Why, why would that be? I want to be agriculture, that's what I want to do, I don't want to develop. Um, and by the way, you know, this, this has been in our family since eighteen fifty-two. And I don't know that the Warners know it, but we're related. So Samuel Thompson, who settled this, married Drusilla Holt, who was John Holt's daughter, who settled this. Okay. Okay, and then, and, and two, just two more things. One is that I'd like to know how the planning commission, um, has looked at and follows the Envision Utah study that they spent thousands of dollars doing and many people from Spanish Fork were a part of. And the one thing that came out of that that was so clear from all the people that had input was that we value our agricultural heritage and that open space. So, I, I, I feel that maybe we're losing that Envision Utah, um, all that, all that hard work that went into finding out what's important to Utahns. We're, we might be losing that by doing this. And then, um, we were told that we were not going to be able to speak tonight, and yet, it's been opened up for people to speak. There would have been a lot more people here that had input, um, that were told they could not come to speak. So, that's another problem.
Thank you. Before we have any more comment, can I get Mr. Anderson to kind of talk about the fairgrounds question? Because that's come up several times here tonight and, and in terms of, I mean, for, the, the, I know that the city has a vested interest in the fairgrounds. I know the city has, at least I believe in, Mr. Anderson, correct me if I'm wrong, the city council's approved some money in their budget to do some improvements to the existing buildings to make them tie better to the design work that was done on the, on the, the rodeo grounds. So, they, they, you know, they're not interested in spending money just so it goes away. Uh, so I think, if, if you could address a little bit more in terms of what you talked about earlier with us.
Yeah, I'm certainly not the expert on cities' plans for the fairgrounds, uh, but I am in meetings like this enough where I, I overhear things and maybe can share a little bit of insight. Maybe to start with, just to your point on, on some of the plans that we have, different ideas that get talked about, and different things that are being pursued. There are several properties that abut the fairgrounds that, uh.
You, you know you're supposed to bring donuts next time, right?
Um, that the city's talked about purchasing to be able to expand parking and things like that. In short, those have absolutely nothing to do with any annexations or development plans for surrounding properties. We'll continue those efforts, I'm certain, regardless of what happens with this annexation certainly. Uh, the city certainly continues to invest, uh, in the fairgrounds. We have a good partnership with Utah County, they continue to do the same thing as a partner. They're in that facility, and, uh, you know, I don't think there's a community that is a city in the state of Utah that's done a better job in recent years with the help of some outstanding citizens that have been very giving to develop a facility that's anything short of top-notch. It's true, we're not in the state of Utah, we haven't had legislators provide hundreds and hundreds, if not millions of dollars, to build a facility, but it's something that the residents of the community, uh, a few key people in particular have really done a great job of building. And again, it, it has nothing to do with, with surrounding development. The city's plans and the efforts that have made it what it is today will continue, and that they won't be interrupted by anything that happens next year.
Plus the partnership with the county, plus the partnership with the county.
Absolutely, yeah, it's been wonderful. It's just that, right, it's a great partnership, and that's, that's not going to change.
Thank you. Gentleman in the back with the Cow Ranch hat on, I think that's Cow Ranch, isn't it? Okay. Free advertising.
Yeah, there you go. My name's Jim Nixon, uh, my wife Diane, I, we have a little horse farm up there on, uh, the River Bottom, just down from, uh, Diane's place. My, uh, just a couple of questions and, and maybe a comment. The annexation, you know, first off, I respect everybody's right to have, do what they want to on their properties. I have no problem with that, I'd like to see everybody happy. Uh, my issue is with development, there's impact both onto me and onto the development and the community. And is there a mechanism in place to deal with that and how do you do it? You know, I, I've been through this once before up in, in the northeast Provo area. You have development come in, horses make dust. You know, there's flies associated with, there's orders associated with them. I feed over a hundred ton of hay a year, I have semis with hay. I've got to get in there and access. And so if there's, uh, you know, is there, is it part of the planning commission's deal? Do you look at that sort of impact that I'm going to have on that, that situation? And how is that resolved? Who, who, whose responsibility is that to resolve that? I don't have resources of municipality to go in for, you know, to fix this, so I basically am put out of business if, if it becomes, you know, enough of a problem, as it were. And that's just my, you know, input on that thing.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, please go forward.
I just have a question. My name is Chris Ellsworth. We live on seventy-six fifty, across the street from where Warners are developing.
So here.
Uh-huh. And I'm, you know, I know we develop, I know we grow, you know. But I have a question for Mr. Anderson. When he put the roadway for Volunteer Drive, that goes right through the middle of my house. When you bring it down and come through, it goes through on the plan that they, on the plan.
It, it ends here, doesn't it?
That's my house. So if he can, if you want to continue Volunteer Drive to go through that property eventually, when you develop, that goes through the middle of my house.
Just don't step out of your bathroom.
But what I'm concerned about also, not only on River Bottoms Road, but on that seventy-six fifty South and South Lane, that's not a big road either. And so do I lose my front yard because they want to develop? Or do I lose my house, you know, cut in half? These are questions that I have, now whether they're addressed here or later, you know, after it's done. But those are questions I have, and we've all seen the traffic and everything pick up from the east side of the house because you have schools down, you know, you have ALA, you have M A T C, you have churches and businesses and stuff. So, that's just part of the growth. But yet, to take away what we have or to look where the roads are coming, do they take into consideration what's on the other side of that road that you're annexing in? Where people's lives are set.
So has seven, seventy-six fifty been talked about expanding in this portion of the Warner development?
Just their frontage.
Just their frontage.
So, so the expansion, so anything, any improvements would be on their side of the property?
On their side of their property?
Right, so they would be responsible for that.
Okay, so it wouldn't cut into ours?
Volunteers east of your house comes into seventy-six fifty east of your house.
So it comes, just, it won't cut through the middle of my house?
I think it is.
Yeah, see, so that, and that's my concern is, you know, they keep saying, well, you can't have these certain angles on roads and different things, but you get down that way, if you develop, is that road angled? I mean, is that going to constrict us with it, what we want to do with our property later on?
Put a roundabout right there.
What a roundabout, my friend, Richard. I'd get stuck on it, you know. Those are just my.
Just trying to help you out.
I mean, certainly, I, I believe that the city staff would look at, you know, if you came to them and says, we want to annex our property now and we want to do development, they're going to look at what's already in place. And, and so, you know.
I mean, I just don't want to step out my front door and have.
A road right in front of you.
A road right there.
Yeah, sorry, get it.
So, that's, that was my concern on that. Hey.
Thank you. Yep, please.
I think David Ellsworth has lived right there too, but us, the city's got a big interest.
She lets you live there, that's good.
I know, almost. So the city's got a big interest in this area too, are they planning to do anything? Or they own property in the county?
Right, right next to ours, in that, well, over.
So they live, they, they got property right down Bradford Lane on the south side, right? So are they looking of doing anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
Because with that Volunteer Drive road, is that something planned that the city's looking down the road to come on over into them too, or?
At this point, no. That transportation plan doesn't have anything.
That, that property was, was an opportunity to purchase, we use it as a trail connector to the River Trail, so people can access, and that's, that was the intent there.
Is that with that little, the parking lot? Right there?
Correct, that's, that's kind of a trailhead parking and then access to the River Trail.
What we pulled in tonight, okay.
So they, they don't have interest of pursuing something either too then?
Not that we're aware of.
That's what I was worried with that road too with the city, right there.
Sure.
Dave, is there a?
Getting tagged again, Dave. We need a mic, a portable, get a, just get a portable microphone for him that he can just hold there.
So, back to one of Diane's questions, agricultural zoning, what's the minimum lot size for an agricultural zone? Do you know? Forty acres.
And what is it for rural residential?
Five.
I have a quick question while you're looking up that. Right over, you just. You just brought up this, uh, corner right here.
Hold, hold on, hold on, we get talking over here.
I'm going to talk right now for a second. So right here is a kind of a dangerous corner. Is there any plans for improving that? And then also, this corner right here is also a fair, well, no, if two cars are trying to pass each other, it is. Tight, and it's a blind spot. Yeah, no matter how fast I'm going, that is, that is a tough corner right there to come around. This one, not too bad, there's a stop sign, but it's kind of tight, especially, you know, like two cars or so coming around there. I spend the majority of my life at the sports park, so I. I travel, because I live just right off the bench, so I'm not going to go all the way over here to come down here when I can just calm down. So, I'm one of about a million, right? But, um, I do think that that is a concern, though that road will be, it's already used a ton. And now it's going to be a main access for quite a bit. Are you going to, is, I'm just wondering, because I do think that's, that we talked about this intersection. I'm thinking this corner and that intersection are, at least in my opinion. I don't, I don't drive down this stretch because that's a long ways to go to get nowhere. So I don't go that direction, I come this direction to get to Main Street.
Back on that new plan, you've got not only the Volunteer Road, but you've got another road that comes out this way? What, what's the idea with that? Not Volunteer, but the.
Corey, you want to go back to the?
This one right here.
Oh, thank you.
So that Volunteer is going to be a main access?
What are you thinking, I'm just wondering?
The stub road or the intersection?
Oh, I don't hear about the stub road.
Obviously, nothing will happen with this road until this property gets developed. But I guess I'm just wondering what the thought is for future use of this road, where that would tie in?
There are quite a few different things. First of all, um, block length is a big deal for us. After years and years, I think of not creating neighborhoods that are well-connected with a good local street network. So we're trying to make sure that we don't create situations where maybe you have, for example, uh, a street here and something up here. and something up here and no other kinda intermediate street connections to what will be a neighborhood next door to it. Sort of the same philosophy comes into play over here. So those were the two things that we asked the applicant specifically to change, going from the iteration that you have in your staff report to what we're seeing here. Now, in this case, they also potentially do something else, which is to provide other points of access to and from the project to deal with that fifty unit threshold that we think needs to be maintained by way of, once you have fifty units, you can't have any additional development until you have at least one other means of ingress and egress to the project. The main access will be volunteer drive. Uh, we talked about the roundabout kinda concept, which would be constructed on a neighboring property to the north. And right now, as I understand it, they have no interest in having any of their property changed at all um, or impacted with a road being built on it. And I think all of us here are perfectly fine with, uh, waiting until they're ready for that kind of improvement to be made on their property, to have that built there. So in the, in the meantime, it's not just a matter of, again, creating a good local street network, but also providing some other ways of access, uh, to and from this property, any others that might develop in the area.
So when this development goes in, this road will be a dead end and this road will be a dead end?
My guess is, is that if this development were to be built over the course of the next couple of years, that, uh, there probably would be a temporary cul-de-sac constructed here. And yeah, it would be a dead end for at least, I'm kinda speculating just from a timing perspective on how long it might be before the property owner to the north is ready to, to do something different.
Back to Tracy's question then, that would mean that everybody living in this, this subdivision or whatever would either need to exit here or come out to River Bottoms or go up this way?
Exactly. Yeah, well, and I also think there's a very good chance that, I mean, as I understand it, this property here is under contract to be developed. Uh, Mr. Beasley was here tonight. I think he's getting fairly anxious to do something on the property that's just next to that one to the west. So I think the likelihood that we'll have some other connection over to Main Street via this or something like it, uh, aside from, you know, South Lane is pretty high before we see the volunteer drive connection. That's pure speculation on my part relative to how the timing might play out. But, um, I think there are a number of different scenarios where adequate access to, to this project could be provided.
Can we pull back up the map of the? So I kinda just want to make a point about, you know, this road is a public road. It's not owned by anyone. So the citizens of Spanish Fork can drive on this road and that shouldn't surprise anyone or this road. And that's okay. I think it should be our responsibility, like Diane mentioned, to make it safe by adding stop signs and things like that. That should be the concern, not trying to stop people from traveling on roads or complaining, but to find ways to make the access safe for the citizens of Spanish Fork and the county residents who live there. And we should all work together to achieve that, not get upset that people travel on a road that we don't want them on. People travel on my road too. And they don't necessarily live on my road, so.
I, I have one more clarification.
Come on forward, please.
So we talked about the RR and there was some discrepancy as to the acreage or what qualified that, just so that the people that own one acre lots or two acre parcels will understand if they still can have animal rights, what the size of the lots can be so that they don't.
I, I think, I think the size of the lots has to do with development. If they wanted to build a house on it, then they'd have to have a minimum lot size to do that.
He was talking about the RR and the animal rights.
But the RR or the animal rights, you, you have, you can have unlimited animals in the RR zone.
So you can have half an acre and have unlimited animals?
Correct. Am I, have I said that correctly? Okay. All right, yep. Yeah, please keep it short. No offense meant, meant, meant by that comment at all, so.
I totally get it. I'm tired too. If this park gets annexed like this, um, just a question to the city of Spanish Fork and maybe the people who are considering developing, would, it would be nice, you know, having the rodeo here. If you had a trailhead, if it's even possible, to come along this road that horses and joggers could actually use. I think it would be so beautiful because it would be tied into the rodeo and it would kinda preserve that feel that it has.
Didn't the Parks and Rec already look at that? Didn't they already look at that?
The, the city is actually, uh, through Mountain Land Association of Governments, received some money um, for trails. And that's how we built, you know, portions of the trail already. But the concept plan and exact layouts haven't been planned. But the plan is, and we have funds, uh, to come from, sorry, the, where the trailhead is today, somewhere across South Lane and up, you know, somewhere along these lines to the rodeo grounds that would connect the rodeo grounds to the River Trail as well as trails somehow to get, and we haven't pinned down a location and where, to get from the cemetery down this. Um, and there's several, uh, projects of that to tie the River Trail to the residence. So that's, money's already been allocated for that and planned on, as well as a trail along, uh, the future volunteer drive. There will be a trail as that, well there, so. Th- this will have a lot of trails to connect.
So you have.
Speaking of the microphone, if you would.
High density where and does it taper off into just family housing? Are you gonna have high density here?
If I understand, the, it's kind of like that, that, that kinda covers the height. And there's a little bulb out here and I'm not quite sure what the bulb out's for, but, um, but yeah, it's, it's, it's there.
So then this area is just gonna be, um.
Designated as medium density. Yes, ma'am.
And then I saw a little place right here. It looked like there was some high density. Maybe I'm wrong on that map?
You wanna go switch back to that, Corey? I don't think there, I think, once you hit that, everything north of this.
It's all the same tan color.
Oh, sorry. Let me get the right map here.
That's growth boundary.
It must be almost my bedtime.
There you go.
You're right here, the, this is.
Yeah, so.
Okay, okay, that makes sense then. I think I was looking at it so large that I didn't see it covered. All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions, comments? Yes, please.
I don't know why anybody, everybody's down so much on the rodeo grounds. I joined the riding club in nineteen fifty-eight. We built the arena then. From old dilapidated buildings and everything to what it was until four or five years ago, when we had a, a great coming in and helped us, changed it all around. We had four nights of eighty-five hundred people down here. I read in the paper after the first night in Salt Lake, they had forty-five hundred people in a ten thousand foot arena, ten thousand feet. We have got the jewel of the whole state, the whole west, right here in Spanish Fork. The thing of it is, we need a little more parking. We don't need to move it. We don't need anything else except take care of it, love it, and then enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for staff or applicant or?
Just one final question. When we talked about the Sun Rock development over here, they have in their plans a three-plus acre park. I don't know if that's because of the size of that development. When you go back to what we're looking at over here with this whole annexation, does the recreation department or the city, do they look in, in this area and determine any kind of a park? Or we need a park in this part of town? How, how's that determined?
Exactly, yes. So, uh, they review, that is, somebody from our Parks and Recreation Department um, as part of kind of a team effort, all of the different development proposals that, uh, eventually work their way to you. And in this case, um, our Parks and Recreation Master Plan does not call for a park in the annexation area or on the property that the Bradfords want to develop. But it does call for some trails. So for example, there would be a trail in the volunteer drive right of way. And like Corey touched on a minute ago, we're working on building a trail that would probably be to the west of the Warner development. And those two things are part of that, that plan.
Dave, while you're standing there, do you wanna, should we summarize kind of the?
I don't have much.
Boundary thing? Cause that's, to me, that's the most confusing part at this point. I don't, for me at least.
And I apologize, I didn't take down names. I just focused on properties. There are two here, uh, between the boundary that, that we're showing here and River Bottoms Road. So there's the suggestion to add those to the petition. Those are the two, thank you. Got it. Um, and then there's the Sorensen property, which, uh, I think might be a little bit tricky for those of us that, uh, a little bit OCD maybe about just some kinda order, but, uh, it being on the east side of River Bottoms Road. But that's the other one that I heard somebody specifically say.
Vincent one too.
Vincent over here, the two properties right in here.
Johnsons. Johnsons.
Johnson, that's what I meant.
So.
I know it is Vincent.
And that one's.
There was two properties and then there was that one, but there was one in between those.
Maybe just to talk about these first, um, without including the property that's south of them, if I'm looking at things right, they would not be contiguous with the annexation area here. They would be contiguous with the city boundary to the east or to their east. Um, so they could be annexed conceivably, but not as part of this annexation. It would have to be as a separate one, if I'm seeing the property lines correctly. Unless we annexed some properties to the south. And those are the only ones that I had down.
Good night, guys.
So let me just, let me, my thought on that, uh, I think, uh, those property owners have been very clear about their expectations. I heard the Bradfords say that they are comfortable with having that boundary expand. I'll talk to the city attorney about that in the morning, just to make sure that we're covering a couple of things appropriately. But it is my understanding that because of how we noticed this initially with the broader area, and that's what we sent out for that, uh, that opportunity for different affected entities to, to protest it, that we could expand and include any properties that were part of that petition at that time, which these were. Um, so I don't believe there's any problem at all, um, with expanding, you know, going forward. Maybe with your recommendation to the city council, talk with Kim a little bit about just, uh, kinda the formulas that we need to follow in terms of property owners that have signed the petition, making sure that, you know, certain thresholds are met. She's pretty confident that, without looking, that's not giving you an issue, but we'll just double check that as well. I, I didn't have notes on anything else.
So I, I do have one question. I know there was conversation about leaving the boundary on the south side of River, or west side of River Bottoms Road. Does it make any sense if we're, if we're looking at this as a new, newly improved road to kinda say, let's make that the newly improved road? And obviously, that's not gonna get improved until these developed, you know, properties develop. But then that gives the city the chance to really make that work well. And then if that stays outside, hopefully that means people would travel that route rather than that route. I, I, I don't know, that's a, even a feasible thing to consider?
Um, I think it is, but, uh, and sometimes things change. At the moment, we have, in fact, I'd say we probably couldn't have a better relationship with the folks at Utah County, their public work staff, um, dear friends of ours, you know, colleagues as well. And, you know, should, for example, these properties develop, we'd require them to improve that frontage, whether it was a county road or dedicated to the city. And, and I, I don't think that that would be any issue with that still remaining a county road. In fact, with improving this here, um, but yeah, that's, that's gonna be more of a county project frankly than a city project. And, you know, I understand that our engineering staff met just last week with the Public Works Director for Utah County out on the site. And they're the ones that formulated the approach on how to improve that and make it a little bit safer. And, um, really, I think it's a matter of the city kinda helping the county by compelling these petitioners to, to invest in some improvements there to improve what today's a county facility. Um, we care, cause like we've talked about, obviously, when teenagers hit things there, typically they're Spanish Fork City residents. And not that we don't care about everybody, but you know, that, there certainly is a need to care for our own there. And, and that's why we're involved. But it's a county facility and it'll remain that way. And I think that can work just fine, but, and I don't think that impedes necessarily any potential improvements that could happen on that road.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the commission?
You, uh, face medium density.
Thank you. So I appreciate the chance to correct that. Up until about a year ago, it was five to eight units to the acre. We changed that range when we added the, the estate density. Remember doing that? So now it's three and a half to eight units to the acres, that medium density range. So I think with their proposal, they wanna be at something like four point two units per acre. That's pretty low on that medium density range. And you guys know, I'm not necessarily a fan of that number being lower necessarily to make the project any better, but in light of some of the things we're hearing, that might help some people feel more comfortable.
One more concern, volunteer drive. So what, what are we looking like when we finally meet into Main Street on it? That makes a big difference on this subdivision.
Uh, if I guessed, I'd be absolutely lying. I, I would certainly say it's not gonna be within the next couple of years. Maybe three to five years, but could be ten, could be maybe longer.
The traffic study for the development said essentially at fifty percent of the units built, we start having problems at this intersection and that connection ought to be made. Now, how long that takes and other parties developing, you know, that'll be a part of that, but.
With them feeding off the south, south road and off of their, going back up onto the River Bottoms Road coming off of Bradford Lane, does the study say that they're okay with this development?
Yes. Yeah, the, the traffic study did analyze the traffic, channel both. Most of the traffic and the model shows it going to Main Street, which is the natural way people are heading to things from the area. But yes, at fifty percent is about the threshold where they said that intersection starts to have issues and it needs to be fixed.
And does our ordinance live, limit to fifty then, before a second?
Our, our ordinance requires a single access development. If it's a temporary, meaning there will be a future connection, well, it allows fifty units on a single access. If it's a permanent dead end cul-de-sac, whatever you wanna call it, um, it's thirty-five, I believe. But, but in this case, it would be fifty on a single access and then they would have to derive a secondary access elsewhere.
They would be limited to doing fifty units until that second access?
Um, by code, access out of the subdivision onto three hundred east or Bradford Lane to provide a secondary would qualify. Which is separate from what the traffic sta, the traffic study's saying, okay, once, once we hit about somewhere in that threshold of fifty percent of the development, which is somewhere around sixty-five units, fifty, sixty-five, that's where the, the amount of increased traffic, you know, and they, they, they count the cars that are coming today. They apply projection growth to that as well as add the subdivision in. That's where we start seeing issues at this intersection that's on an angle and, and not ideal. So that's, that was.
Well, there's no light, so it's.
Yeah, and, and the light needs, you know, clearly needs to line up with volunteer drive.
Are the trees that are on this corner gonna be removed as part of this development or is that on somebody else? Is that on the McCall property, do you guys?
It's kinda right in the middle of the curve, so I, I, it's hard to say until we get really specific. But that kinda halfway through the curve is where the property line is. They would be expected to build their frontage across theirs, which. They would be expected to build their frontage across theirs, which we'd have to tie into the corner and, you know, create a, a safe passage there, yeah.
So I have a question, sorry, but Mr. Anderson said that that Volunteer Drive road would be a dead end until you get the other people developing?
Correct.
Okay, you're looking at fifty to sixty to seventy homes coming out of that one road in front of our house on that small road that you talked about, that's. So that's a concern to me too. Did the traffic study include that until that main park's developed?
Yes.
To go all the way through?
That, that's the question we asked them to answer.
Because I mean, we already have a high traffic volume anyway. You have fifty, sixty more people coming out of that subdivision on a dead-end road.
So you wanna summarize what she just asked?
Sorry.
I, I think unless I get it wrong, the concern was that we add more traffic onto South Lane.
Seventy-six fifty south.
Seventy-six fifty south. And did the traffic study look at that? And, and the answer is, that was a question we asked the traffic study to solve, is how many can access directly there, go out South Lane and connect to Main?
Before RRE is going there.
With what is there, yes.
Yeah, so they evaluate the current conditions, evaluate the proposal, and then throw it into a magic hat. I don't know exactly how they do it. But, and, and to calculate, you know, it's a very scientific methodology that they do, but it then calculates the capacity, what is the capacity of that road and can it, how much more can it handle in addition to what's already there? And so what you're saying is about half of the development.
That's what the study came back with.
Yeah.
Now, that doesn't address necessarily tight shoulders and narrow areas. That's, that's, whether there's ten cars or a hundred cars, that's an issue.
That's right.
It, it deals more with intersections and, and cars moving.
And I guess I, I take solace in knowing if, if, if that property is under contract to develop, that, that issue right there will be taken care of through the design process. So. Other questions, commissioners?
Are we just making a motion for the annexation?
And proposed zoning.
We are doing the rural residential or including the?
Do we need to state in our motion the addition of these two properties?
Yeah.
Yeah, we should. If you wanted to include the Sorenson, that one is what, just whatever you, for the Sorensons, well, it's a little, for a little north on the, on the east.
Is it staff's recommendation that we approve that zone change?
Yeah, what's your take, what's your take on Ag versus RR?
No difference at all, in my opinion. Um, for purposes of what we're talking about on properties of this size at least. So there's that answer. And relative to staff's recommendation, dude, obviously, we have an updated concept plan. We didn't spend a lot of time, any time reviewing that before tonight's meeting. Um, I think you have a couple of different options. My guess is that the applicants have maybe pretty strong feelings about what they'd like to see happen. Um, you're just making a recommendation, so, you know, conceivably, we could work some things out in the next couple of weeks before a city council meeting. Um, they would need, like I said, R one six zoning in order to get that four point two unit to the acre density, R one six zone. It's one of the zones that we have listed as being consistent with the medium density residential designation, so there's no inconsistency with, see with the general plan there. Uh, if you just recommended that the annexation be approved with all rural residential zoning, for example, and the council approved it that way, then the applicants would simply need to apply for a zone change and maybe to come back with you, or back to you with a preliminary plat proposal, kinda like we did with Weaver's Vineyard tonight, did those two in tandem. Um, that certainly is an option. Uh, I think they'd love to have the zoning with the annexation, but it's your call.
I don't see any reason why we're making them come back if we already know that that's what it's gonna be in the future.
They have to come back for preliminary plat regardless, so either way is fine, but I, I'm.
I heard that right then. Are you going back to your original plat? You're not considering my property?
We, no, we are.
We are.
We are.
Considered, that's all.
We, it will be, no, it will be included in the annexation.
If, if the motion includes it, it will be included, but yeah, that's the intention, I think. If somebody wants to make a motion.
See if we got it all right. So I'd make a motion, if I say this right.
I'm, I'm listening, I'm good.
Um, how about we're to make a motion that we recommend for the city council to approve the Warner subdivision. Well.
Sorry.
Okay.
Trying to help you out.
Okay, so instead of doing just the subdivision, I was gonna do just the subdivision as the R one six. And then everything else within the annexation as Ag? RR? Okay, RR? Okay, so I, I make, my motion then would be to recommend to the city council that the Warner subdivision, um, be annexed with a zone of R one six and that the remaining annexation, which will also include the Stevenson property, the Robertson property, and the Sorenson property, be annexed with the zone of RR.
Okay, and then there, there were five conditions listed in the, in the, um, DRC move approval there.
Okay, with the following conditions. One, that the applicant.
Read it just.
Oh, with the, with the conditions in the report. Not good?
Yep.
All right.
In the staff report?
In the staff report.
What's your, what's your list?
First motion, sorry.
You picked a tough one.
Figure it out.
Way to bite it off, that's good. All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Euler. Any conversation or question about the, about the motion? If not, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Davis. With that, we'll go with a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Euler.
Aye.
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 So I think the next step then is city council in thirteen days. Is that correct? This'll be submitted to them.
I don't see, yeah, I think that.
If it's not, then it'll be the first Tuesday in September. So, thank you all. We really do appreciate your consideration and comments, and it's a time of being here. It's ten o'clock. Actually, did we include those two properties in the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Anderson?
Hi. Good, it's good to see you, Wilbur.